So, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the next conference. Thank you. Thank you for coming to this conference.
I believe she is, but we should probably start. You want to give her a minute?
We're going to do public comment first anyway.
So, we both committees have public comment. There's just one public comment.
Call for board meetings or you call. Keep doing work. But some calls like board meetings order on December 6th at 6:30 PM.
I'll call the South Borough School Committee Special Over Meeting to order December 6th at 6:33 PM.
Okay, so we always start off with public comment, which is for any comment anyone wants to bring forth to our attention that does not deal with the specific agenda. If you want to talk about a specific agenda, you wait for that. I don't want to kind of... See, I don't see anybody in the audience for the thing, though. Anybody? Okay, so we're ready to jump into our first item, which is basically prior to the point to be Iceland school team longer on the A C way of South Borough School Committee. Here's... And we're going to do...
See, how are you doing?
Me too. I think, yeah. So, as everyone know, Kim Pathway suddenly unexpectedly sadly, a couple months ago, her term is set to expire in May 24th. This Monday night is going to take us to the next elections. It will be a special election in May 23rd, basically, uh, the end of the year, and so that term ends in May 24th. So that was the time we were going to do it, in May of 23rd. Um, it's my understanding that we've got three people who have stepped forward and it's present in position for the end of a few months. So we're going to talk to all three tonight, and then I'll be taking them to the conference room. I'm going to change over to change of this point. You can explain kind of where you guys are at this point, and we will talk to Jessica first.
Great. So, thank you, Kathy. So, this meeting is specifically to appoint someone to the vacancy that until under hell. Got three candidates, full disclosure. I've talked to each candidate personally a while ago, so I actually, you know... And it was an individual meeting. It was just the candidate and I. The candidates also presented themselves at the last school committee meeting, so that wasn't a question and answer. It was a description of why they were interested in filling the vacancy or being appointed to the vacancy. So that's background I have. Does anyone have additional background they want to add to this before we bring the candidates up? Okay.
Do you want me to say something first? Do you want to...
I'm thinking, just a, just kind of a brief description of, of, of your interest. And then we'll sort of line up for any questions if anyone would...
Okay, so, as you know, I'm Jessica Devine. I was on, I was served on the school committee for a term. And it was a challenging time when I was on there. We had a wonderful new superintendent, which comes with a set of challenges when you have a new superintendent. Then we dealt with triple E, which I'm sure you guys may not even remember at this point, and then COVID hit soon after. So it was a very challenging time. But I enjoyed it despite that, and I loved the people I worked with. The only reason I decided not to run again was just reasons having to do with my family. It just didn't make sense for me to run again. Right now, I'm on the Trotter School Council. I am a board member of the Algonquin PTO, and I'm a South Borough Food Pantry volunteer. I believe I'm a strong candidate because I've been on the school committee. Obviously, I know how it works, and there'd be no training time. There'd be no time to tell me what's going on. And it's a position that's lasting only five months, so I think that's valuable. I've worked hard, like I did last time. One of the key things that I did was stay in touch with the community, and I would do that again. And I think it's just important to note that I have no intention of running in the spring. So this is just a very temporary thing for me, just to help out my community and my fellow, my former members of the South Borough School Committee. And Kim was a friend of mine, so, you know, I'd be honored to do this and fill in her spot. Thanks.
We'll go from left to right. Questions, if any?
I don't have any. Actually, maybe you could talk a little bit about what committees, or some committees you've involved.
Oh, yeah. Okay. I was on the Policy Subcommittee with Katura, and that was, let's think, what was major step? Well, we got really sidelined by COVID. So I'm not sure how much we actually ended up doing. We did the, I think the most, the biggest policy that we did was the having to do with online privacy. That was one of the big policies that we did pass while I was there. I wasn't on the budget committee. The big ones for us were budget and policy. So I was... And I was also liaison to the seniors chip, which I...
One of the areas that's so focused that our previous member drove was around students with special needs and, you know, children that learn differently. Can you talk a little bit about, you know, what advocacy you have in that space, or how you would like to contribute in that?
So I was also, I forgot, that was also a subcommittee. That was just a daily part of what we did. I forget that. That's actually a subcommittee. So I was the liaison to NSPAC, so that was, I don't, actually, right now, I do have a child. I, it's... It's personal, so I don't know how much I should go into that, but I do have a child who I have to advocate for right now. So that's a personal thing for me right now, and I understand more now from a personal perspective what NSPAC is all about and why it's important. As an advocacy, I haven't had to utilize NSPAC personally yet, but I understand the importance of it. And when I was, I mean, when I was on school committee, I'm trying to think. I mean, everything was just so dominated by COVID. It was COVID 24/7. So a lot of things got pushed to the side. I mean, that was really what we did with COVID. So... Everything that I kind of, like, my main things that I wanted to do when I was running was I wanted to get communications better. And that was something I've seen has gotten a lot better since I haven't been on school committee. And then I was, I think it was my last year, I was the NSPAC liaison, but because of COVID, there wasn't a lot to do. So I guess I can't really talk too much to it, Molly, because COVID was so dominating.
Okay. Um, so I actually remember in the Policy Subcommittee, I think, that what some of the things we did before COVID hit were, I remember working on the transportation policy.
Oh, my gosh, yeah.
I think together. So it was great working with you on that. And I don't have any specific questions. I was going to mention the communication piece, and I think that was another area of focus that, you know, Kim brought to us. And it's important, obviously, and I know that you also have had a focus on communication. So, yeah, I don't know that, how much could be done in the next five months, but...
I'd be really interested to see what, because I've been involved with Parent Square on the AP, on the APTO side for the high schools. So I'd be interested to see just, you know, on the K3 side, what's going on at the school committee point of view.
Thank you.
I have no questions. We worked together three years. I guess I'll comment that as, as, as you, as you mentioned, we hadn't moved the communication forward very much, you know, during your term. But before we moved it forward because of the drive that you put when you were there. So you can take some credit, even though it's a, you know, kind of afterwards.
Okay. Hi, Jessica. I really have any questions. I haven't even asked, and I really appreciate your willing to volunteer for this position at this time, just kind of an important time. As they can see, Bill. Thank you. Thank you. Good to see you. As you noticed, I've attended a lot of student meeting, serving, so I think I've got a good feel for the work you did then, so I don't have any questions at this point. Thank you so much.
Same here. Thank you for stepping forward. It's not always easy to step back in. You know, Kim left some, some big shoes to fill. So I appreciate your honesty in not looking, you know, to move forward with an election and move forward, but to hit the ground running for the last five months. So thank you for stepping forward. I think it's important what you've done in the past, and thank you.
Thank you for stepping forward and for all the time that you've already committed to our community, our school committee, and everything else that you've done. I just have one question. What grade are your kids in?
Eighth and junior high school.
Okay. Okay. I think COVID, you missed three years of other kids, other people's kids. I don't remember how old you... Thank you.
So I have no questions. I'm Jessica. Thank you for stepping forward.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Dr. Lee?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Hi, everyone. Hi, again, to most of you. My name is Zee Lee. I am a new resident to, in South Borough, moved here in August. I lived in Shrewsbury before. So I myself, I'm a scientist. I work for a pharmaceutical company up in Devon. So I lead a group of 20 scientists or engineers there to help our... And my job is to help manufacturing colleagues to make medicines that can be used to treat cancer and other things that, you know, other things that you don't want to have. So, but, you know, really, I'm here to tell you about my passion, about education, about serving the, the community. I, when we lived in Shrewsbury, you know, I, I love spending time with my, my daughter Emma, who put in third grade now. But when, when we were in the Shrewsbury School District, I, I served on, on her school council for a year as a parent member. Also, cutting there through a very competitive process, but just, you know, just less, less intimidating. And also, I was a substitute teacher in Shrewsbury. I taught different grades, first, first grade through sixth grade there, just use my vacation days to help the community. When there was a short, a shortage with us, you know, our substitute teacher, so I helped the community there. Also, I, I, I've been coaching Emma's softball team in Shrewsbury and South Borough, coached several seasons. So really, just a way of spending time with Emma and also helping the, the community. And after we, we moved to South Borough in August, the first thing I did was I talked to the, to the principal of her new school. And I volunteered to, to join the school council in the new school. So we, we still need to have our, our first meeting yet, but I'm very excited to get this opportunity to, to serve in the school council there. And also, I emailed the town, expressed my interest in serving the school committee, really to continue my passion, my, my efforts in serving the community in the, on the, on the education side. So, you know, I myself have gone through many years of education. That's, that's my passion, and I, I want to help about the kids in the school district and really, so just serve the community with my passion and my education background. And thanks for the opportunity for being here and introducing myself. And I hope you have to answer any questions.
Thank you. I have two questions, actually. Sorry if you can hear me.
Yeah, I can.
Question is whether or not you would plan to run for an election when the period is over? And then my second question is, are there any, like, special areas of interest or passion that you have specific to any educational needs or what we've done in the school community in the past or things in the future particularly interesting?
Yeah, definitely. So I, I was planning to, to run for the new term, because I, you know, when I volunteered in August, I was told, you know, there, there's no vacancy. So I was going to wait for the, a next term. So, you know, I always, for sad reason, I'm here today, but, you know, I hope I'm allowed an opportunity to fulfill that shoe temporarily. And then I'll be, you know, I'll be running for the new term. So the second question, I, I am particularly interested in STEM education, because that's, that's where my, my education background is. And also, I spent, you know, effort in, in, when I spent time, you know, focusing on that area, when I served in the Shrewsbury School Council there. I helped drafting the school improvement plan for the new school year. I focused on the STEM initiatives. So that's one area I, I, I think I can contribute a lot. And also, my experience in, you know, in substitute teaching, it can also help me with, you know, really interacting with the kid. And also, some of the, some of the things you mentioned earlier, you know, working with students of special needs. So I've worked with the other teachers in, in our classrooms for that, too. So I can also bring my experience to that. So, yeah, that's where my, my, my experience mostly, like...
Thank you, Bee. And I'm so impressed at, you know, by being a new resident, actually wanting to step into control. So I want to congratulate you. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, so one of the things I want to know is, as part of a board member, not only are we talking about education and how we're going to improve or act back for the students. But there's a lot of business and analytics and policy development. Could you tell us a little bit about maybe some other leadership roles that you've been in outside of work? But maybe where you kind of work in that aspect?
Yeah, I was just going to mention about my work experience, but, you know, I, I need a very big team, so I have a lot of experience in, you know, in budget planning for my, for my group there. But, you know, outside of work, I, I, and most of my experience here locally come from those experiences I just mentioned, serving the school, you know, coaching in those teams. So obviously, not to the level of the school committee, doing the budget planning. So specifically, you know, in my, in my school council experience, we worked on the school improvement plan, drafting the mission statement, picking the mascot. You know, but all the areas that, you know, I don't necessarily interact with from my daily life or work experience. But it's a, it's, it's, you know, it's some of the things that I learned from serving in a, in a, in a council like that and working on topics that are, you know, related to the school activities. So, but, you know, at a higher level, or, you know, or the, at a more complicated level, that's something that I'm curious to explore if I get the experience in the, in the school committee.
Okay, um, I sort of covered my, any questions that I may have. Thank you very much for stepping forward with that. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I also thank you, and I also don't have any questions. I do remember that when we had that Zoom meeting, I threatened to ask you questions about the details of your work. But I still... I still don't think I can come up with a challenging one, so, but, but thank you for volunteering. I'll be all the time here anyway. Could you just explain further what the school council in Shrewsbury, that you participated in, and what the nature of that was?
Yep, yeah, we, we met monthly, so we had, you know, the, the principal, assistant principal, and teacher members and parent members. So I, I got in, you know, through a competitive election process, but got selected by, by, by parents' votes, got in there. So we met monthly, we discussed issues, and basically helped the principal's office make decisions on, on certain topics, like, example that I mentioned. We, we worked on, we were given an order draft of previous school years' school improvement plan, and we discussed and worked on the, the new, for the new school year. And then the, the mission statement, because it was a, it was a brand new school, they just built that, you know, right, just the summer before we, we started the new school year. So we worked on some, some of the new initiative, like drafting the school mission statement. So that was also one of the things we did in those monthly meetings. So, yeah. Yeah, these are some of the examples I can think of.
I'm passing the talk to you. Again, thank you for stepping forward. I'm impressed that, as they mentioned, a relatively new resident in town, already going for something that's a pretty substantial commitment of time. So I'm impressed. It took me several years after I moved to town to sort of figure out what was going on, and where I might want to get involved. So I'm still trying to figure something out. But clearly, strong credentials, with track record in education. Have you actually watched or participated in some of the student meeting meetings since you've been here, or within the most recent ones?
Just the most recent one, where I, you know, met everybody in, in the, in the committee, in the committee, yeah.
But not before that?
No, not, not before that, yeah.
Again, you certainly seem to have a passion for the job, and that's very impressive, but I don't...
Thank you. Yeah, I really just wanted to, because I started doing all these things in, in Shrewsbury. So as soon as I moved to South Borough, I wanted to continue that. I didn't want to just stop. So I reached out and, you know, explored all these opportunities.
Hi, thank you. Welcome to South Borough.
Thank you.
It's, it's nice to see new faces. Nice to meet new faces.
Yeah, by the way, Jess and I are neighbors. Just a few houses away.
Um, so, so again, thank you. Thank you for stepping forward. I appreciate, again, your willingness to do this and doing it in Shrewsbury as well. If you're not selected tonight potentially for the interim position, would you still be interested for running for school committee in the spring?
Yeah, I, that was, I was going to do that, and, you know, Jess will be my, my best resource on that. You know, she, she ran successfully before. So we, we talked, you know, putting up the board and getting signatures. So that's the process I'm also looking forward to.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for stepping forward for this, especially being a new. That's great. I do have one question. We're entering a time of year with budget season. And I know, you know, Greg in the back is busy with his team getting all the numbers together. What kind of value would you bring to the school committee in terms of, of finding a side?
So, as mentioned, you know, honestly, as I mentioned earlier, finance is, is the area that I'm not familiar with outside of work, right? And in, in work, I do, you know, to, to, I do the budget planning for, for my 20-member group, so it's also a lot of responsibility. So I have experience, you know, in, in my workspace. But outside, I think I got my first impression in, from the last committee meeting where we went through with the, the budget planning. So I, you know, that's, that's something new that I, I learned, you know, the, the areas, the school, school infrastructure, maintenance, and also school initiatives where, where we spend money on. So, so these are the areas that, that I've only had limited interaction as a parent, because, you know, as far as we, we talk about these things. But as a, you know, member, a committee member, right, this will be something new to me.
Thank you.
So, it's resume is chugging into the maybe. So you said you substitute, where you taught a lot, you've done TA, you've done some more, so it sounds like you, for the videos. When you were the substitute teacher, what grades were you sent to?
So I've taught sixth grade, fifth grade, first grade, third grade. Yes, I, I wasn't allowed to teach second grade, because my daughter was in the second grade. Yeah.
So, um... I don't, I don't know what we're going to do tonight, but you are welcome to choose three weeks. You know, there's lots of places that you could be invaluable, so you know. We'll talk about those later, as far as places go there, but this is great. The STEM is great, and we know, and, and also Emma has got a very, she's got a heavy book, yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
She will, you know, back, and I'm sure, you know, appreciate anything that you've done. Northrop puts on a STEM for, for women every month or so, so you ought to get involved in that, or you have something coming like the afternoon or something to, to sleep with, or spread your chucks up. Really nice and trying to focus on the kids and women, you know, the best of incidents of that stuff.
Yep, definitely.
I'm really glad it's...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Unlike my peers, I do have prepared speech, just because I get a little bit nervous. So if you don't mind, I'm going to read for my speech. All right, so, wish it could be off the cuff, guys. All right. So thank you for the opportunity to introduce and tell you a little bit about why I'm passionate about serving on the South Borough School Committee. My family has lived in South Borough since 2014, and in that time, I have built extensive ties to the South Borough community. Both of my kids, ages 12 and 9, have gone through elementary school in South Borough, starting in pre-K. My younger daughter started in the Finn Pre-K program in 2016, and I've worked extensively with school teams at Finn, Woodward, and Neri on her complex IEP. In this process, getting to know the principals, the teachers, and the many therapists and specialists in our schools. Our entry into this fed world was and continues to be a learning process at every stage of development, and every progression to the next step brings about new learnings and surprises. I found it rewarding to share these experiences and help families navigate similar challenges by serving on the board of the NSPAC since 2019, where I currently serve as vice president. This year, I am also a member at the Neri School Council. Overall, in the past eight years of living in South Borough, I have volunteered many hundreds of hours in our district schools and the neighborhood communities in various capacities, including SOS, NSPAC, Cub Scouts, Girl Scouts, PTO activities at base school, Neri School Council, the Sage House Residential Treatment Program in Framingham, and Cloverhill Farm in Berlin, where my older daughter is an avid horseback rider, and that's pretty much her second home. While I find all of my volunteer work rewarding, and the work that I am most proud of includes, I have organized and produced the Go the Distance Awards. For those of you not familiar with Go the Distance, NSPAC hosts an annual event to honor in our community, those in our community who have an outsized impact on a student with a disability. Ninety-eight percent of the recognizedes, of the people recognized at the event are teachers and other specialists within our districts. Over 100 people attend the event, including district administration, principals, teachers, and staff. This is a feel-good night, shining a light on those making a difference in our children's lives. Additionally, I am proud of my work to bring innovative experience and thought-provoking speakers to our community through NSPAC speaker series on topics related to autism, executive function, learning disorders, disability state planning, IEP process, transition planning. And this year, with our focus being on peer acceptance and inclusion, we're bringing programming related to this topic along with speakers that will talk to our community about ADHD, collaborative problem solving, and anxiety. I work closely with Marie Allen, our Director of Student Support Services, and others on Superintendent Martin's team, providing insight and feedback on special education programming curriculum, and bringing a parent's point of view to the challenges faced by families in the community related to sped programming, programming within our districts. Lastly, I'm proud of my work establishing greater lines of communication between NSPAC and members of the current school committee, as well as establishing a monthly email newsletter with topics of import for NSPAC and the disability community. My professional background is in corporate IT program and project management. For 15 years, I was responsible for managing large teams and executing complex global projects. I've helped senior management positions at Dell, AMC, VirtusStream, Staples, and Travelers Insurance Company. And in that time, brought many critical projects from inception to successful conclusion through communications across all levels of management, collaboration, coordination across departments, a penchant for out-of-the-box thinking and problem solving. Working on NSPAC projects underlined for me how important it is to have a strong connection and feedback loop between NSPAC, the school committee, and district... The school committee and district administration. I believe, as my dear friend Ken Chalender did, we worked together for two years on NSPAC. That by serving the school committee, I can contribute a unique perspective on curriculum and programming within our districts. I left my corporate court career in twenty seventeen when time constraints of managing both of my daughters' care, therapies, education, and services for their disabilities became too heavy to manage. Alongside a professional career. I feel so fortunate that our family was able to accommodate that. And is allowing me to turn my pursuits towards the community volunteer work and advocacy for special education that I'm so passionate about. While I am no longer working in a professional capacity, the skills that I developed over my time in the corporate environment, volunteer work through SOS. Um and collaborating with school teams on my daughter's many IEP complexities give me a well-rounded, a unique perspective on the strengths and weaknesses within our school district. I feel that my extensive professional and personal experience, communication skills, long-term commitment. To volunteering in multiple capacities and passion for working with children, educators, support staff. Qualify me to serve all families in our community as a Southborough School Committee member. I would be honored to be considered for this open-appointed position today, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
I I have the same two questions. Um so which one would you plan on running for during the for the election, the upcoming election? And then my second question, let's just to speak on that um that I asked before. I know you have, you know, I know your experience with NSPAC and the great work that you've done there. What other areas outside of that are you particularly passionate about that school committee does, whether the pastor, something that works?
Um so. Thank you, Jen. Um so yes, I I do plan on running uh for the May um for the May election. Um and outside of um sped, I am also. It's kind of like, it's sort of related, but like I'm I'm very passionate about diversity equity and of course inclusion. Um. So there is a bunch of um programs that specifically, again, as NSPAC, we're working uh with the district on related to the diversity equity equation. I also have a passion um and am hopeful to get on the um DEI. Committee um as well to board a lot of the work to bring um stories from the community. Um out to those um in the community um from kind of like all walks of life, including those with like.
Thank you so much for that overview. Have, as you said in your opening, you know, look at everything that qualifies you for this. Um have you taken any consideration into some of the things that may not be able to continue. Alongside of the school committee and and how that impact your.
Well, thank you, Kamali. Um. We have, we have talked about it. So I have talked to you. I work very closely, obviously, on NSPAC with. Alyssa DeGenn and Nicole Meher, who are the other two people on the NSPAC committee. And we work very tightly. And collaboratively on everything that um we do. Um they uh know that I have been interested for a while in running a first school committee. Um and we have been actively trying to engage with the community and recruiting members. We actually have a new member who's gonna be elected onto NSPAC. In our December general thing. Um so because they know that I have this passion and I do want to try to. Move on and potentially run for school committee. Um if I'm not appointed tonight, elect um run for. The election in May. Um we are trying to actively recruit so that I can take more a um. Not a secondary role, but more in advisory role um to the committee if um I have other um things that will be put onto. My plate. Um right now, I also volunteer somewhat um Cub Scouts, but that's kind of like. Up and down. I'll continue to volunteer at um the barn that I volunteer at right now, just because my daughter's there like all the time. Um I literally live there as like a second home. Um and as far as um Neri School Council. Um they only meet uh once a quarter. Um so I think that that's a relatively low time commitment. So these are all things um that I feel that I can handle on top of being on top of um the school committee. Um plus the fact, like I said, um I'm fortunate enough, fortunate enough right now where I'm I'm not working in a professional. Job. Volunteering for the community is my job. This is what I'm passionate about. And so I really put all of my time in.
Um I'm familiar with your materials and everything and I. I don't have any questions right now. Thank you.
How are you?
Good.
Thanks for coming. Um I also don't have any questions. Uh again, sort of full disclosure, I've. I've worked with Joanna on um uh in NSPAC meetings for the last several years. Uh. Think I was a uh. An official um representative of the school committee and also just sometimes when I I could do it and I'd violate it for them. We also had a chance to get there outside of the NSPAC and kind of talk about. Um her um her experiences. So I don't really have any questions that I can add. Um. Um but thank you for, you know, thank you for stepping forward.
Thank you for having me.
Um I think you give a very comprehensive description of the qualifications for still in this position. Thanks for stepping forward and very impressive fact, the occasion experience, the equipment skill of your experience and bring to here. Um what following another question you asked earlier. And you thought the the school budget process much, uh school finances, very busy team. I think as one of the agencies, that's gonna be a topic that could actually consider. Strange twists to that. So follow that process much or that be my experience?
Um in full transparency, that would be a learning process for me. I have um started going through um the school committee meeting minutes. And pulling down the budget spreadsheets that they've started pulling together. I've also gone through and I believe that was in the October meeting minutes where the school committee budget priorities. Um were outlined. So I have taken a look at that as well. Um so I'm a fast learner. When I was in my professional career, I did have to manage a very large budgets for. Uh multidisciplinary teams. Um and so I have um budget experience of my professional career. I manage the budget for my household. I'm the CEO of my household. Um and like I said, um I have started taking a look at the spreadsheet and I followed the budget process um for this whole committee of the past like a couple of years, just not. From the capacity of being on school committee, just from the capacity of being a resident and a concerned parent.
Thank you. It is complicated. I followed it for years. I still get surprised.
Thank you for stepping forward. Um just wanted to say one thing specific. I worked on a bunch of notes. Um. You may not have a professional job, but you have the most important job is being a mom and advocate. And there is no job more important than that. So I just wanted to say that, as you said a couple of times, you know, it's not my professional job anymore. You have a more important job now. Um. I can relate to you very much. I have a child that was on an IEP. That participated in the Go the Distance Awards and some of the people and the paths he crossed. Have changed his lives in so many positive ways. And our kids can change the world. My son has gone on and he's serving the public. He's doing, he's an EMT. He's doing amazing things. And it was because of the. Schools and the guidance and the acceptance that he got within the schools. So your story is very close to my heart and and I thank you for sharing it. Um and um again, I I would hope no matter what happens with this interim position, you know, that that again, you would also consider running. Um in the in the spring, I mean, voices need to be heard and and um advocacy still needs to always happen. So thank you.
Thank you.
Um thank you. I don't know if I can follow that. And Sam took my question. So. Um I appreciate your passion. Obviously, this is something that you're very interested in. Um and I appreciate all the advocacy that you do for your kids and for all of our kids. Um. We're in the schools now and it's so obvious we're so lucky to have. The groups that you're involved with and have the staff that we have, um which obviously flows into budget discussions too. So there's a lot of moving parts. Um so it's, you know, this is extremely important. So um thank you for stepping forward and for all the work that you do and you'll.
So this is a refreshing meeting. Um starting off with people I've treated completely such a time with this meeting. So. Thank you so much. You are a very accomplished um parent. Um the reason she doesn't have a budget is because the school, you know, the school together is about seventy percent of the hometown budget. So it makes breaks the budget.
Yeah.
One way or the other. But I don't have any questions other than just you thank you for doing this. Um. Clearly, you need to be successful whatever you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So I have a question about, um well, I mean. Let me um offer up a suggestion. Um I have a recommendation. Um which I would, I think, put forward in the form of a motion. If that's seconded, I would then um explain the reason for my motion. If it's not. We'll move on. Is that acceptable?
It is.
Um so I would move that we appoint Jessica Devine to the vacant seat uh in the school committee. I'll make that motion.
Your second, second, who's second? I guess we've got an option in a second. Um so any further discussion?
I do have some. So let me tell you my reasons. Um and I have two. And it's actually, it's it's difficult for me because I I haven't known Lee very long. I've um known Jess and Johanna for. A much longer time. They're um, I think they could all do the job. Um but let me give you a reason number one. Um. We took a little while before we made a decision to appoint anyone to this position. Um and if you. Um at the at the school committee meetings, the discussion. Either was almost unanimous or unanimous. The problem we had in not moving forward. Was that this is an elected position. And we didn't feel good about kind of replacing that process with an appointment. You basically have four individuals who now basically um um choosing. And at the time, it was fair, it was just four individuals, not five. Um but just um making a, making a choice. That the talent usually makes um through an election. So. There's a second part of that. And that is that um. The fact that Jess is not, she's already identified, she's not going to. Um if thi- this means that Jess will not have, because she's not going to run, that this position will not have a. Uh an advantage by being quote in an incumbent, okay, going into election. And I think the, I don't think we should give anyone an advantage, uh if we have a way to do other of this. So that's really my reason number one. Uh reason number two, um. As Jess said, she hits the ground running. Um. We, she's very familiar with uh working with the committee. This is gonna be a difficult year, especially budget-wise. I think everybody's gonna put their hand up. Um it's gonna have some different kinds of difficulties that that COVID had. Um. My own experience was, um she worked very well with the committee and uh it's not a long tenure. It's only five months. So you don't have too much time to get started and by the time you get started, you're done. So uh those are my two reasons. And I guess. Anyone else say it?
Here for the school committee, rest of the person.
Yeah, uh so I um I seconded the motion. And the reason I feel I feel good about doing that is um. Uh you know, my my hesitancy kind of all along in terms of. Appointing for the the short, such a short period of time was that there is a learning curve. It's, you know. And anybody can learn it, but it there is a curve. And so sort of by the time you kind of get. Curve, the whole process is gonna be over basically. And so it'd be, I think tremendously helpful and beneficial to the committee to have. Um Jess, somebody who's kind of been through the process, is familiar with all of the terms and the, you know, the way this all goes. Um. And it will actually be an asset in such a short period of time. So I think um. That's that's my primary. Right.
Um I'm, I would agree with what you both made. I think that, you know, it's really hard because we have three really great candidates. Like any of them. So I do think that, given the fact that we're right and the, you know, we have a bunch of committee meeting coming up. We, you know, it's already been a rocky start. We have the calendar discussion. So there are a couple of things that. Basically, someone needs to come in and be and be able to just start running. And so it's going to have to. Train someone on how to go through the process, getting this out of the way. Whereas like during election period, there's an optimal time to get. People used into the system and they know what they're doing as they go through the process. So I think that for me is. One reason I think I agree with this idea. I personally don't like to have to just nominate someone to an elected position. I think that, um you know, I worked with Jess. I know she was a once in a community. Um she has a lot of the interests and. Um she actually um can, when she replaced, when she was not elected. Took over a lot of the things that Jess was doing. And sometimes she were to come back in, would be able to take the ground running with. I think either either the other two candidates would be wonderful to just think given five month period. Um it's probably the best solution in my mind. And then the other thing I'd like to say is to encourage the other candidates to please run for elections.
Yeah, I would just add that um. It's always difficult for me to feel like I'm uh going left. So I think that because of. The engagement that Johanna has already with so many of the initiatives that we are. Working on. Um I don't think that she would have trouble with um the meetings that we're gonna have. This week, next week, you know, and and starting in January. Um the things that, you know, I haven't said this to you, but that feeling to bring to tables, like the attention to detail. Um that's gonna be integral in the next couple of months. Being able to like read through research and actually come up with. Proposals of how we should do something or what we should revise in terms of a. Program and and funding, et cetera. Um I foresee that she's gonna bring that table. For Jessica, um I just think that. Because she has had that experience in the past, I know that she handled it, but I almost. Think would be an access to have a new one. And uh so those kind of where my, those are my thoughts on the two candidates. I think that the reopening, I think all three of them. Be great participants on the board. Um I think all three of you should, which can feel proud to know that either of you. Take this appointment. Um I know I certainly would. So yeah, I don't think I, you know, those are my thoughts. You know, I'll share those in my thoughts on. Well, you know, where where we can help. Can be.
Um my thinking is pretty much the same as Rogers, where there's three outstanding candidates, two of whom are gonna run for. Actually, one of whom is a past member who'd be coming in to fill a short term. Um I feel like if I am to instead choose one of the other two people running, kind of. Feel like it mixes almost how my role is like a voter in an election in May versus.
voting in a select board, asking now to decide. So I think that pointing Jessica to the position keeps things more neutral. And then I'm very excited that I think there's two outstanding candidates that are very engaged, bring a lot of energy, and that's what we need for elected positions in town. And so I'm really encouraged by that. That's why I my vote, I think, is going to be the same as Rogers.
I'll echo the comments. It's a great problem to have, to have three candidates who are maybe very well qualified for different reasons in some cases, but I think these are also the candidates here. For me, the big issue is it's an important job on many levels, not only important for lives of families and children in town, important from a budget standpoint, et cetera. And I'm a strong believer in the voters having the choice for those kinds of decisions. And I think that, as I mentioned, incumbency is sometimes overrated, but it's clearly a significant factor in many elections. And I don't think it's a fair thing at this point to inject that artificially from the appointment here from the voters, I think ought to be decided. So I think Jessica's serving the maiden term here, leaves that process sort of neutral if you allow the candidacy of the vote. And I think that's the way it ought to be in terms of public choice to this.
Um, I, I agree with what's been said, but I think one of the, what she needs things is represented with an opportunity that one of the things that we talked about tonight is budget. And we have an opportunity that for five months, there's a seat that can be filled. But during this five months, all the budget discussions team party. So I would hope no matter what the decision is tonight, that, you know, the two that don't, that may potentially run again, will participate in the next five months, just to see what an important part of the budget process is, you know, as you move forward. And I think that will benefit you as you move forward as well, and as you run. I kind of shared the same concerns that again, I wish we could appoint everybody tonight. I mean, this, this is really tough. This is probably one of the tougher ones I've sat on since I've been on board. So kudos to you all for that. But I think, you know, with the election coming, I think it would behoove us to allow the voters to let their position be known. But, but again, you guys are pretty tremendous, and I'm pretty impressed to sit here with you tonight. So thank you.
I agree with everything that's been said. I think we're in a tough position tonight. And I hope we don't discourage any of you from continuing to participate in everything that you do and everything you're going to do in the future. I think we'll, the town will be very well served. But I think for this short period of time, having stability of just stepping in and, and not having a huge ramp up would be the most beneficial for her. Thank you all for stepping forward. I really appreciate it.
So of course I'm last. We, I think it is important that we keep the field neutral. And I, and so I hope you guys, so I do hope you both do run, let's say. If you decide to, the process starts in mid-March. You need to see town court, and he'll send you now, whereas if I can sign to the service. There we go. So, but I just kept telling him the first time, it really is a very, wow, this is so good. Okay, so we've got a motion on the table, it's the second one, just to present to Phil, the term through the next election date. Yes, we're going to make the margin. Alright, this is a joint meeting. Okay, so, so we'll alright, so I'll make a motion that the support supports the appointment of Jessica to fill turn three, the next election date, May two thousand so both groups have made a motion, they seconded, discussed it. It begins with a joint format, so we need five of the nine to approve this. And then all in favor of the note. And so thank you guys, Jessica. Really nice to meet.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
So we hope to see you again.
Thank you.
Did I make a comment, Karen? I want to echo the difficulty of this decision. Hopefully, hopefully that came through. The three folks here collectively have yourselves to blame for that. Okay. If, if you weren't all, I think candidates that we think would do an outstanding job, it would have been easier. And I'd just like to make a comment to Mr. Lee and you know, we're hoping that both Johanna and Zee run. If I did notice that the select board chair hinting that she might try to steal you away for, for, for other things, right, in the community. So make sure you, make sure you take papers out and for the school committee.
But the one I'm really waiting for is for you to talk to him about one of his papers, second page that he
What I was wondering, he's substitute teaching the third grader of biotechnology.
That, that is one of the things that he and I talked about. He goes, so what did you, what did you teach them when you were there? And where they're all, well, I shouldn't be worried. Decided that they all might end up being, being scientists, okay?
Roger, do we collectively have the power to increase the size of the school board to seven members?
That's up to the town. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. By Katura, seconded by Kamali. All in favor? Ours. So we are adjourned at seven twenty-nine. Thanks for, yeah, thank you. And thanks for spending a little extra time. Well, this was more time than was budgeted on. I think it was a quarter.
We're going back in session at seven thirty-five. Okay, so we're ready for the whole hearing of National Grid and Verizon. And we're hoping that the phone number that we see in the audience is one of the two. So the hand is raised, assuming that's why you raised it. So Vanessa, why don't you bring over four one?
Two hands.
Two hands. Okay. And so it's at my appearance, okay, so bring over both of them.
Good evening. This is Michael Parent from National Grid.
Feedback, just so you know. Okay, so you're from National Grid, Michael. What about, is four one out?
That was my other number. I, I I want to have a backup plan, just in case sometimes there's some issues. I just shut that number off.
Okay, so here we go. So I'm going to open the poll hearing.
It's already open. We can
Last time, we didn't have anybody here. So we're continuing here. They were open at the last meeting to basically hear from National Grid and Verizon about a new poll at nine Clemens. Okay, so you're
Also, this poll is, we're requesting to install this poll on town property to feed the service at house number seven Clemens. And I believe in the future, it's to serve another new house at number nine Clemens as well.
Anything else?
That's pretty much it.
Any questions?
Yeah, I, I, my, my standard question. In the event that at some point we want to put a sidewalk in there, the idea is that we like to have poles located far enough back from the road lane that a sidewalk could fit in there. I've actually driven over there and looked at it. It's not totally clear to me exactly where the pole is going to go relative to the, to the current, there's, there's a temporary pole here. It looks like feeding power to the house under construction. But again, the goal would be to leave room for a sidewalk, if there is room in terms of street setback here in terms of, I don't know where the town property line is there. Do you happen to know if there is room to do that?
I personally don't know the, the town take in that area. And I don't also know if there are other poles on that other side. The sketch I have shows the poles on the other side of the road. I don't know if the town has a preference, whether they be more towards the front of the sidewalk area or the, the back. But we could address that. If, if we had a contact from the town, we could, we could set the pole. I'm not sure if it's been staked yet. I would hope it would be, but we, we can, we can work with the town to determine the best location to put it in for future, for future purposes, if need be.
That, that's what I would ask. And the DPW superintendent, Karen Gallagher, is the best person to I think. So, but again, I, I look for stakes. I had a hard time seeing any stakes there for new balls. So there's construction going on. So what?
So sometimes we put stakes out and they, they disappear for one reason or another, whether a truck runs over them or somebody walking by takes it out, or it, it, it's tough to stake stuff early and have it sit out there for a while because you never know what could happen.
Okay, that would be my request, I guess.
Anybody else have a question? Justin? No? Andrew?
No.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to approve the request by National Grid and Verizon, which is pulled in at nine Clemens.
With the request, okay.
The request.
Located.
With the request that was decided made that they attempted to locate it in a manner and that it was due to put the sidewalk. Second. We got it? Alright, we've got a motion, we've got a second, all in favor. Five, so five zero. Okay, so I think we're done. So now motion to close the poll hearing.
Second.
All in favor. Right, closed. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Should have closed first and then, I guess.
We can fix it in the minutes.
Okay, so is Leslie? Okay. You want to wait to talk to her? We weren't appointed without talking to her. Freddie did some letter recognition, but I don't know. I don't. Okay, so let's do, do one. Very. Melissa, she, can you bring Melissa?
Good afternoon, or good evening. How is everyone?
So Melissa, thank you for coming. So we are continuing a series of meetings with certain boards, commissions, departments, et cetera. So you're number three. And you're very well, we know, and she'll definitely win the win. So you always have lots of good things to say. So we thought we
Perfect. So I'm just going to go over a couple of, you know, quick things. You know, if the, the board has any specific questions, please the board has any specific questions, please feel free to let me know, and I'll answer them the best I can. The first update I wanted to give you was about the Breakneck Hill farm dump. So we are still waiting for the abutter to sign the access agreement, unfortunately. At this point, I think we're kind of unsure on what that final outcome will be, but we're hopeful we're going to have a resolution very shortly, either way. We do have a path forward in each situation, no matter what happens. So we're just kind of waiting for that finality to really understand what DEP will allow us to move forward with, whether it's just on our property or our property and the abutting property. So after we get that resolution, then we can either do the additional test pitting on the abutter's property, or we will just move straight into starting to create that cleanup plan for Breakneck Hill. Just on its own, without on the abutting property. I got to give a kudos to TRC, who's been our LSP for this project. They've been very on top of kind of getting the site sorted out, reaching out to the abutters and her engineer to discuss. And being on site, you know, as, as much as possible, and also looking ahead. And thinking of, you know, getting on top of what DEP would require. Especially in things like these asbestos containing materials, I'm not very familiar with, so they took those necessary steps to get them covered in the meantime. So if you drive down Breakneck and you see some plastic, you know, clear tarps through the distance, that's what they're, they're covering. Those samples that came back with some asbestos containing materials, mostly shingles, you know, very expected materials for the timeline that we knew about and what kind of the use was of the property. So we're hoping to stay on schedule and be able to have a proposed cost ready. You know, either for town meeting or whether it's going through capital, I know me and Mark are still kind of working out those details. And he's the expert on that aspect, but that's kind of where we are for the farm dump. Before I move to the next one, is there a question specifically on Breakneck?
Just to be clear, as far as what you just now said, you expect the thing to be such that whatever we need to do to clean up and spend, you'll have that information ready for town meeting, that's what you're holding?
That's what the goal is, yep, that's what the, the timeline within the administrative consent order is kind of laid out to, to be. We do have kind of the clause in there that, you know, something does go wrong at town meeting, or there are, there are unexpected delays. You know, we do have some ability to extend that timeline if necessary. But my goal and what we seem to be on track with is to get this completed in the schedule outlined in the ACO, which would have the cleanup being done next year, or next fiscal year. So by the end of 2024, hopefully this is all, you know, wrapped up. The site is in its final conditions, whatever that may be, but we're, we're getting close to, to knowing what those would look like.
Melissa, do you know, is there a ballpark, and I know it's, it's tough to say, but you know, as we're going into the budget season, it would be good to know what we're looking at, six figures, seven figures?
I think preliminarily, you know, the goal is that, and it seems the opinion of DEP, that this will not turn into a landfill closure. So this is not going to be a cap situation, which is huge, both in a time, you know, kind of monitoring perspective, cost perspective, you know, this wouldn't require ongoing monitoring like some of the other landfills would. You know, not a specialized cap. The goal right now is, it, it seems plausible that the preferred route is to kind of take off the superficial debris, get as much out as we can. And essentially kind of just loam and seed on top and, you know, take out all of what is the public safety concern, you know, thankfully, all the testing came back that we did have some asbestos containing materials. But, you know, there wasn't any hazardous materials that would trigger any sort of notification or further cleanup plan. So it really just is solid waste. You know, it's metal, it's, it's just old shingles, roofing materials, you know, kind of what you would see from this type of area. So preliminarily, in thinking of just taking off that top layer, I think the numbers that I've heard is kind of maybe on the lower end of the eight hundred thousand and upwards. And that is also dependent on the area that we end up being able to, to use as well and clean up. So if we do the abutters, it might be slightly more depending on what we find, but I think in that eight hundred to a million is probably a safe bet to, to start planning on.
Now, thank you, I, I, I think it's, it's important for us to, you know, obviously, I was hoping it was going to be much lower than that, but yeah, you know, but I think as we move forward, that's going to have a huge impact on where we go and what we do with budgets, so thank you.
And right now, one thing I did not mention is that there's, for the MVP, the Municipal Vulnerability, Vulnerability Preparedness Program. There's kind of like a request for proposal, so not, it's kind of before their bid opens, you submit a form and see if this project might be viable. So it's something I've talked with our coordinator for Central Mass previously, and that I'm working on kind of submitting this request to see if maybe we could get some funding relief from that MVP program. That round opens typically in March. I think it's just going to be the, the timeline of events, if, if we have the design ready by the time we need to submit the grant would be the, the real question. So if we can get that ready as soon as possible, then I think we have a better chance of being able to find grant funding to be used in FY twenty four.
Thank you, and thank you for staying on top of this.
So Melissa, let us, what we're going to do, oh, let's see, everybody's got questions on each thing you talk about, right, so. This one, Breakneck?
So. So the anticipated costs low. There's not any not any anticipated further monitoring out of that, is that, is the, is the low eight hundreds to get us through another phase, and there's another phase where that's?
That, that would be the cleanup, end of story.
Clean up, covered on, and you done?
Yep.
And, and the issue is that part of it is on town property and part of it is on the abutting property?
So the, yeah, the majority of the farm dump area is on the town owned portion. There's a small, you know, maybe not even one acre, the kind of the fringe of it that may extend onto the abutting property. So we did test pits right at the property line. And there was some debris, you know, that was kind of like six feet under, very sporadic, so we're more just making sure that it doesn't extend any further, you know, so the best case scenario was we wouldn't find anything on the abutting property. And we know where the dump ends. But right now, that's still kind of unknown, because we did find that kind of debris very close to the property line and kind of indicative that it did spread, because this all used to be one common property. So this is kind of inherited by both, you know, us and the, the adjacent landowner from Ray Davis, who used to manage the property.
Melissa, I won't hold you to that number, I appreciate you giving us a ballpark of, of an idea, at least where we can start about, so thank you.
Yeah, yeah, please don't hold me to it, but I think that's at least what I've gotten from TRC is the preliminary, you know, best case scenario, this would probably be the least amount.
No questions, looks good, thank you.
I swear down with that, Melissa, thank you for that.
So the other item I had is kind of just briefly about budget and then kind of community gardens. So we did, just for your kind of knowledge, put in an extra five thousand in our stewardship line item. And this is mostly what comes out of the self-assessment for the ADA study and conversations I've had with the ADA committee. So this is mostly just there's kind of some changes that would need to be done to the parking lot to have compliant parking spaces, access into the community gardens and also kind of the raised garden beds. So the community gardens currently is funded kind of by a revolving account, the fees for the plots gets used for everything, utilities that happen at the garden, so it pays the water bill. It pays, you know, the hoses, the, if we need to till the soil, if we need to bring in soil in. And that is usually pretty consistent throughout the years. So there isn't too much flexibility within that account to kind of do these larger improvements. And within the stewardship line item, we are currently looking to replace the current shed that is there now. The stewardship committee has a need for a place to store their tools and equipment, you know, now that they're doing a little bit more hands-on work there. And so when they asked the conservation commission, you know, what, what kind of shed, would this be okay, where's the location? The commission was pretty solid on that, you know, they don't kind of want sheds kind of throughout the property, they want to keep them very consolidated. And so to either replace the existing one or kind of do in addition to it. So we've kind of done a little assessment of the shed, it is older, it's kind of falling apart. It's kind of flooded a few times this summer, because the water line is inside the shed. So they're working on replacing the shed in a hole, so that kind of cost added with the ADA, we've asked for a little bit more to kind of cover both of those, but the shed should be this fiscal year. And the ADA aspect is for next year. So I have for that one.
Nope.
All right, so we're okay with that one?
Perfect. The next one is for town meeting, the commission has been working on our stormwater management bylaw and regulations and updating those. So we plan to have, we're just finalizing very minimal changes to the bylaw. We did a lot of time spending updating the regulations to make sure that our rainfall amounts are kind of consistent with today's standards and also helping to better kind of alleviate the hardships for some of those smaller lots in town that are pre-existing. So right now, our stormwater bylaw, it's a threshold of if you disturb fifty percent, you need a stormwater bylaw. We have even half acre lots where if they want to do an addition, they, you know, pretty quickly meet, meet that fifty percent. So we're amending our bylaw to be pretty consistent with the EPA standards of one acre disturbance total. And we're also kind of closing the loophole on some of those A and R lots that previously have not required stormwater management permits that now will just to capture kind of what we call the common development. So if it's kind of three house lots being developed by the same developer, or even if they were kind of split by the same person. Those three individual properties would then need a stormwater management permit, because through all three, they will cumulatively alter up to an acre. So we're just kind of being a little bit more consistent with federal and state standards and hoping that we can kind of close any remaining gaps, and I think we're bringing this up to standards, we had Par Corporation, I think last year or the year before, come in with some recommendations to our regulations that we updated to be compliant with our MS four permit, so we are, we will be totally up to date, and hopefully we won't have to do it for a little while, but we're excited to almost be done and have that on the to town meeting warrant for next year.
You're talking about it's going to be on March, this March?
Yeah. Yep, so we're just about.
So you think you're almost done as far as the work goes?
Yep. Yeah, we've done the, the work in the regulations, so ironically, we kind of moved backwards and did the hard part within the regulations, and then the very minor kind of changes that then come into the bylaw, we're just tweaking that and just doing the final formatting. You know, it's just one of those bylaws that I think has gone through too many people, so the word document we have is a little sketchy, so we're working on just making sure that everything is formatted correctly.
One question, Melissa, so you may not have the answer to this, when was the last time there was an update to stormwater bylaw? And again, I appreciate you guys incorporating everything and taking the time and getting us to where we need to be. But I can't even remember when the, the last time there was a change.
I think the stormwater bylaw itself has probably not been updated since two thousand and eight, when it was enacted, but the regulations have been kind of consistently updated, probably at least every five years from what I saw on the, we kind of have a revisions section. So we did kind of a minor update two years ago, and I think the last one before that was twenty fifteen. I think they were looking at fees and some other issues, but it didn't really change the intent of the bylaw. Not that we are now, but the thresholds were kind of making a little bit more relevant.
Yeah, I, I followed these conversations at ConCom, I think this is an important thing to get done, so I appreciate the effort that they've done.
So bylaw is going to be approved at some meeting regulations? No? So the Congress will do that?
Yeah, so our, our regulations just need to be approved at a regular meeting of the conservation commission, you know, now that we have the bylaw, it will be posted for two weeks prior before we take that vote, that the bylaw needs the town meeting vote.
Melissa, I have a quick question for you that I'm, I'm, you know, hoping you look confused about. So is this bylaw that you're looking to, to, you know, and you have a placeholder, you and I have had about this. Planning boards ask for a placeholder to amend town bylaws to include a new chapter on environmental controls. Is this the same thing, or is this something completely different? And if it's something completely different, are you aware of this or working with planning?
I am not aware of it, so I'm assuming that it's not the same. This is our erosion and stormwater control bylaw, so I, I'll take a look at what planning's proposing, but I'm not aware of it.
Ask for a placeholder, and, and the, the intent appeared to be the same, but as you're talking about it, I didn't.
I can't remember, is this part of the zoning bylaw, so it needs two thirds, or should we separate it?
It is, it is part of the zoning, yeah, it is part of the zoning bylaw, that is one thing that the commission is looking to do is move it out of the zoning bylaw as well, because right now appeals go to the zoning board of appeals, and that doesn't necessarily make sense, so that is something that we will probably have to change as well.
How do we move that out, is that required, two thirds, like to change the zoning bylaw or move that, or? Question for town council, maybe.
The town council, right.
That's where it belongs, I think, I agree.
I think you're voting on a zoning bylaw to change it, it's going to take the two thirds to take it, to take it out.
So Melissa, does this need to go before planning board for hearings, because it's a zoning change?
If it's, yeah, it might be. I'll have to check that.
Town council, then.
Yeah.
We may be able to remove it with the two thirds, and then the majority to put it someplace else.
Yeah, Melissa, if you can just send me or, is it email?
Okay, got it, thank you.
Okay, Melissa's edit.
Um, I just, I also want to thank the board for the admin support hours that you put in the budget last year, we filled the position with Laura Davis, she has been phenomenal, she's quickly stepped in, she's doing ZBA and conservation. She has surpassed our hopes and dreams, she's really stepped into her role, and we want to just give her a quick shout out and thanks to the board as well. It has been a huge relief for me as well, I've started to be able to pick up some of the technical work and focus on some of the open space aspects, so I think this will be a huge positive change. And, you know, we're already kind of reaping the benefits, but we'll continue in the future.
How many hours?
She's nineteen total, so twelve for ConCom and seven, and seven or seven and a half for ZBA.
Only took us two or three years to get that done, so glad to get to the finish line with it.
We picked a winner, so that helps. That's all I have for tonight.
Anything else, Melissa?
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
Have a great night.
Good work.
Thank you.
Okay, cheers, reports, I actually got quite a bit tonight, so. As fast as I can, so. I guess I'll start off with the worst one. So, as everyone knows, we have recently finished the downtown paving project, right? And the last piece of it was done the day before Thanksgiving. And I just put the work, the actual, unfortunately. And so we had a meeting last week at the Public Safety Building, both chiefs and me, and then several business people from downtown, they asked for it, so we agreed, and so I'll break it down in three parts, I started off with Betty, they were just flattered that no one bothered to talk to them about the tiny, this last piece of paving. In some cases, the day of Thanksgiving is a really busy day as far as the business goes, so several businesses got hurt because of the timing of the paving. They, they shut off Boston Road down to Bi-Bagley, so Palponis didn't get any gas, this is for three hours, it's day before Thanksgiving, so, anyway, these guys were all very pleasant, but very pointed, and they're, they're, okay, so, you know, I, I said, nothing we can do, I can't change what happened, I'm sorry, I wish, you know, I know, I'm sorry, I'm, I've got another piece to go, we still got several tracks, and so we will learn from this and make sure that the next time we are well advised and catch him to, you know, everybody hates robot, right? I mean, we all hate it, it's, it's always, it's got to be done, but you still do it in a way that takes into account, you know, businesses, so that you really don't hurt them any more than you have to. So that was the first part. The second part was basically criticizing the actual work itself. So it doesn't appear that much of an effort was made to meet with those businesses to describe what was going to be done, they seemed to be kind of surprised about how it turned out, the two cutouts that were coming out, the ways faces were done, et cetera. So they had quite pointed criticisms of the actual engineering, and I mean, Tom had heard, it should have been, you know, you pleased, it should have been able, I don't know. So I, I think what we probably need to do when the new supplement is in place is ask him to have the engineering of that piece of it, just to make sure there's not anything else that should be done. Ms. Rachel, they, she got a phone call from someone who, I guess, bicycle had trouble, he said it. I know there's some concern about the barber shop as far as how that's engineered. The Mars Cafe people said, it's really Um, the Mars um, cafe people said, it's really dangerous pulling out of Mars Cafe. Now you've got to really lean out to see what's coming because of the way that cut out his gun. So he's afraid there's gonna be a wreck with people. Went up too far to see what's coming and someone can find down the hill to pass the case. So anyway, long story short, we probably often have the actual engineering of that piece of it reviewed um, to make sure that it's, it's sound and there's nothing that should be done to improve. Third thing is starting forward. And we just talked about this, this time downtown, et cetera. Um, I mentioned the national grid parcel. I said there is um, some desire on the sub ward to acquire the national grid parcel um, to possibly turn it into some type of waste water treatment plant, maybe pavement on top of it, et cetera. And I said, with that, would you guys want to have? But they said by far the waste water treatment is what we need to focus on. Um, one of the um, business owners who's been in town, has been in town for decades, said, I just want you to know that I, when people ask me to tell them not to open businesses out there, that it's, because climate is not good and infrastructure is not good. So that was the most impressive part of the whole thing. Um, so they um, this one says they value this every sixteen, every eighteen days. Um, and it's eight hundred dollars. Um, so you know, we, you know, we will wear the problem here, but you keep talking about this. We probably need to really unroll our sleeves and try to really look at this and see what we can do so that we end up, um, hopefully the people wanted to come back downtown and open their businesses. So that was the gist of it. Um, Chief Knowles there, Chief Close were there and um, they did their best, um, but it really was like Um, they did their jobs. Um, Ryan got to the, the people down there to correct people that they shouldn't have to park. But just in seen which good, um, ours lost a whole lot of business in the morning. Definitely lost all their business. However, um, said that he lost several clients that couldn't get in because of over So anyway, it, it wasn't a, um, I didn't leave it very Um, so there's, um, so I think we've really got some work to do. Makes you respectful to think about what we can do to Um, okay, um.
I just say thank you for meeting with them, the chiefs as well, and at least getting the issues on the table.
Um, okay, so yesterday we had two interesting markets at both them. So we started off at one o'clock with a meeting with the um, Dale MC people who are in the process of starting to market their property. They're, they're gone. Dale is not coming back to Southwood. Um, so we met with Paul Wester who's basically, I'm in charge of, um, sounds like real time for Dale or one. He used to be MC, he's part of, he's part of the Eagle family, but it looks like he's got his job with, uh, hold down operation. So they had um, CBRE is going to do the marketing. So they had that person on the, he's um, Corina was there, Marcus here, I was here and mommy who had plenty of upstairs. So that was, who's there? So that's who was, was there on our side. So the main thing they're wanting us to know is um, there's a big piece of their land, about thirty eight reset is residential, that's down to the back of it. Um, and they were trying to kind of gauge appetite for supporting um, some coming in and trying to do a full Um, so their intention is to market the parcels into two parts. They're gonna market commercial and they're gonna market the residential. So they want to separate it out. They think they can probably maximize some of the proceeds if they do it that way. But they really wanted to know, you know, obviously what's gonna commit to would be because we came, right? But they wanted to see, you know, kind of how we reacted to that part of it. Um, they showed us a um, um, plot plan that show how they could end up with a road of Crystal Pond that we're gonna write into it. So it wouldn't hook right onto um, Blue Nine, which probably helps. Marty was on this call too, so she got to listen to this. Um, so um, that was, they know, you know, we, we discussed the new one that's on the table right now, this thousand. I didn't say I was, you know, even that's the before. So anyway, that, they're gonna start the marketing of the commercial piece of it on the fifteenth of December. They got their brochures and they're, and so that's gonna happen. They are going to um, eventually when they get down and have some interest in it, they're going to basically let the buyer there know that they're going to require an easement at a commercial apartment, which is where there's, well, we have to go to the forty B. Okay, so that really was a purpose that was just to kind of gauge um, what we thought about. Right? They get the numbers. They knew about the two hundred. They knew when it works. So they did a lot of work to, to, to get out. Um, so then once that meeting ended, um, Hallister stayed on the um, Zoom. Oh, that's right. Okay, so um, I stayed on because I've been asking them about the tower. Um, and I've been asking about this for years, you know, do we have it ready to be on the tower? The answer is no. So now, no, we don't. So we're there at the goodness of their hearts. Um, the MC does own the tower. American Tower manages it. Um, American Tower is the biggest tower in my heart, it's touching, but they don't own that tower. They manage it for the MC. It's, as you said, it's a cash cow because you don't have to pay tenants, you know? I mean, they have to do a lot. They don't mess things up. Um, so um, it's been a cash, you know, they didn't buy it because of them, but they, they got it. So they're gonna sell the tower with And so um, Mr. Jones promises before, um, so we will have a agreement in place so that we have a right to be on it. Um, doesn't mean that the new um, buyer won't make us renegotiate agreement and maybe who knows what that would have been what said. Um, so I know we don't pay anything, but there we have no legal rights to do this, I'm gonna say. So um, he's working with a couple of people in the fire department. I'm not sure who, I have to give a list of the components on there. So they're working on that thing. So we should have a agreement soon that basically the more I still like to be in the tower. Okay, Chief Killers is where they're well, well aware of this too. So that probably was good. Um, okay, um, I'm gonna wait on the regional dispatch update because it basically um, is part uh, we're going to, to get down to talking about, we want to start as far as next steps, go with the two going in and then, so I'm gonna skip that for a moment. Do all that together. Um, not much to update in Hoppington Water me, except that um, once we had, so we had a meeting yesterday too, as with the other three towns that are right now in the group of just for regional dispatch, right? I'm thinking of West Borough downtown. So after that meeting was over with, then Hoppington stayed on the, stayed on that with Mark and I. Um, and then, so we tried to talk back in the meeting set, still that set, but the town manager of Norman um, understands he needs to be in the meeting set. So it involves his port to propose a base to, to meet the
They just sent those in those dates.
So that's the next step on that, is to get the dates set for that meeting. Okay, so go ahead.
All question. Do you anticipate the, are those dates in December or?
Yes, I asked them to be similar before the twentieth. Um, I explained to some, the several chairs on the meeting too, so I explained, you know, our, tell me it's March twenty fifth, it's gonna be your best. There's not till May. Um, so I said, you really gotta, you know, move it fast if you, uh, really wanna get, for it to be on the So I think they understood. So it sounds like we got these.
And is this to communicate the points that we came up with in our last meeting, or is it those already have been communicated?
The woman. And um, the chairman hasn't seen that meeting, so, cause she basically said, so she didn't see it yet. So whether she see it or not before, cause she did watch our regional dispatch meeting, um, but that was interested. And so we'll talk about that in a few minutes, but she watched that and she didn't see the one that from water, but I guess she will actually. Okay, next thing is um, I'm just gonna update everyone on DPW projects. Remember that one of my goals this year was to basically help um, um, improve the communications from the department. Well, that's kind of not gonna happen now, right? Um, so I at least tried to keep up with all the different projects and where they stand. Cause I think that will help us when we get down to the last matter tonight, which Ms. Barsha was going to, um, cue us her friend. Where we talked about possibly um, pointing in, in the price of the two, can we go ahead? So we'll try to understand how much is on the table, because I think it will help inform the decision by those, what we shouldn't do. Mark, feel free to chime in here. Okay, so North Grove Road Culvert is done. The guardrail went in um, on Monday. It's done. So last step is to invite Jamie over there and basically bless it because we have um, state office money set big for it.
I now have nothing under my report, so.
When it's gonna open, I don't know.
So what, yeah, so, all right. So um, so yeah, the, uh, the, there is substantial completion on North Road. Um, you know, we wanted to try to um, to uh, do something uh, with Senator Eldon's office to kind of recognize the state office contribution to the funding of the project. Um, Senator is, is away um, on business this week. Will not be back um, until next week. We try to set something up and uh, you know, I said, don't wait for me. Get it open when you can and we can work on something when he gets back. Um, so I'm working with um, Miss Gallagher just to determine as soon as we can open it, we will open it. And um, uh, our office will flood social media to make sure that, you know, people are well aware that it's open. As soon as one person knows and people see people using it, it'll be, it'll be widely used. But um, I know that Ms. Danza, Miss Gallagher have gone down and inspected the work and are pleased with the work that's been done. Uh, so I think we're, we're in good shape and, you know, as soon as we can get everything physically moved, we'll have that.
How many years is it been?
Five?
You sure it's not more than that? I remember you talking about this a long time ago.
I believe, well, we, we, we've been talking about that culvert pipe for a long time and, and I will give Miss Gallagher credit because um, we were looking for a place that when we have the staff in-house and the expertise to do it in-house.
Yeah.
And somebody had the bright idea, I believe it was Miss Gallagher, to go and put a steel plate over it and pave over it. No harm, no foul. And that steel plate lasted for four years until it finally started to collapse. And that was when we had to do something that closed it. So um, that, it's, the issue has existed for at least five years.
Within budget?
Within budget.
We got a ribbon cutting.
You know, we can, uh, can, can do something for, um, you know, for historical, you know, pictures and everything. So let me get to that point. But I think it's more important at this point.
All right, next was New Street. Um, okay, so that was going to, that's the new water pipe that goes, the length of the stream, remember the water, the pressure was horrible, water was yellow. And also, that's totally done, water pipes in, everything seems to be working fine and great. Um, the only thing left to be done is possibly paving the road up and set us next year. So it's done. The, the pipe is in, it's working. So the actual substance project is done. So check that one out too. And the next one is going to start at Main Street. So paving's done for the year. Um, as I understand, they've gone back now and um, fixed in front of Mars Cafe that, that lip um, that caused the person to, to trip and fall. So that, I can't really, but I didn't see it. Um, I don't know why it's been down there.
I thought, you know, I, you know, it was, it was interesting because um, Miss Gallagher had shown me some pictures of before, before the project even started, you know, and a lot of the things that, you know, have been direct as part of this project were existing back then. You know, before the sign walks were replaced and that. So um, you know, I understand the issues. I understand the timing. You know, um, I will point out that um, you know, Sean Morrow and I now text each other. I have his cell phone. He has mine. And um, you know, the past several months, we've been, you know, communicating back and forth about some of the issues as well as, you know, trying to give him good ideas on the timing. Um, but unfortunately, as we get closer to the end of paving season, getting the paper out here becomes more challenging. And it's like, okay, um, we're coming. Just wanted to let you know, type of thing. So we've tried to be as, as responsive as we can.
So, any CSX news?
CSX news is that the engineering is done. Uh, and you're just finding, you're seeing sets to basically say, go. Um, got paid for. We gotta make sure it's still money, you know, when we look at the road money. Um, so we gotta make sure that that's still set aside, make sure superintendent knows about that. But
Yes, that's the whole process that's I'm paying for. And we're all set to pay for it, but they control the process, the contract, everything, bidding. So um, I don't even know if they did it.
So that's still, that's running to be, to be used. I'm trying to do the ones done first. Okay, that's three that's done. Um, the tree removal contract um, is basically, you know, Stumpage is doing it. Um, just waiting for Stumpage to get us on the list. Any more news on that one?
No, we've signed, we've signed the agreement. Some of them are listed. They have the list. Um, uh, the problem is, is they also have the list of the other communities in the consortium. We've already, you know, signed, uh, signed the work, so we're just gonna try to push them.
So just one thing to keep in mind is one of the concerns with planning board we had was doing it in the spring. We wanted to have it done in the fall through the winter because of baby nesting birds and all of that, right? So I think we need to let Stumpage know that we're a little under the gun on this, if, if they want to be able to fulfill the contract.
Right. Is this work that can happen during the term?
Sure, sure. Preferably even.
As long as, you know, as long as weather permits, you know, it's not a temperature dependent thing. Um, you know, I think the only problem, even, even rain's not an issue. It's wind. You know, they can't get up in the buckets. It's too windy.
This is why we're all getting phone calls on that specific tree. People who know us, we know where the, where the trees on that list.
I think, I think it's gonna get worse once it starts and like there's one of them, two done.
I, I think this is one though, that we need to make sure we over communicate is happening when it's happening. So that way we reduce the phone calls.
So we've got to make sure the communication on their end.
Yeah, I just want to make sure the public's aware of it.
I agree.
You know, and the process is followed and make sure it's clear.
Because it's a good amount of time that's happened between the trees being proved to be removed and the trees actually being
Yeah.
Right, next one is the um, annual paving crunch back, um, where Cal will go into so many streets. Um, with that, we get a million, three or so costs that coming back has been posted to the central register on the seventh of December, so tomorrow. Um, and this is supposed to be back by twelve twenty one. Uh, obviously that won't get done in the spring, but at least we'll have a T W. Um, ready to go. Um, okay, let's see. Um, Parkerville Road. So we got the um, permission from the state to, so we're out of the regulations. We now got the right to set the speed limit um, from the whistle. That's gonna be on the twelve twenty agenda. Okay, so we knocked that down and check it out.
Parkerville North. Yes. We had a question now about Parkerville South.
It took us a long time to get there. And, and I think you have, one of my updates, I had sent you the explanation as to for the, what the comment that came back from Maston is why this was taking so long. Is because, you know, the city of Boston is looking to do something which may have affected Maston, the law that governs these SSRs. Um, and, and so that kind of loosens up.
Maybe this is something that came up, uh, in the spring or summer.
We just said the May thirty first.
By state standards, it's pretty great, but the residents.
Six months or something that's
Is, is the same situation on Parkerville South? Does the state uh, set that limit too in the south as well?
I I'd have to go back and take a look at the SSR, but I think it because the language that I looked at and the board will have to execute a new SSR. So basically, the SSR just cuts out that piece of Parkerville North from the speed regulation, allowing you to set a different speed limit. And that, and that's all you asked. So I believe that you know, I'm not sure how that's gonna go with you. Like, yeah, okay, so now we take another piece of the same SSR and cut that out too.
Um, reverse dance.
That may have, well, I, I guess it depends on how it breaks up the whole speed regulation to begin with, whether we just approve for
We had a conversation that night. Chelsea was involved in that with Parkerville South. And I'm not sure we had our facts right, because since then, Sam and I had a transportation one day. There's a gentleman that came in that lives there and he basically told us very nicely how dangerous that piece of it is. And I'm not sure we had our facts right as far as the speed limit is there. So maybe that's another deal, but this is only Parkerville North.
Yeah, let's do what we can here.
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's so many roads we have. Okay, so that's the list of things that are um, done, okay? Um, then, you know, so this is what's pending. Um, so um, Porterville Road's out, big project. Um, so totally cutting at this point, I'm twenty five percent design, lots, long way to go to, to bring a fresh. Um, the pocket part, as we know. Um, the court for, called Porterville North, which is the keys in front of the um, public safety building. That's where she did the change order for each purchase when we didn't do Deerfoot and Flag. So that's probably done. So I assume each purchase from the government to do that.
I'm sorry, have you discussed?
So.
Change order or something?
She did a change. So we're with each purchase. Deerfoot and Flag were taken off, right? They substituted Porterville in front of the public safety building down to the Causeway. Um, where it's messed up, where they worked for the building, wanted to place. So it's wrapped down there. So you're gonna do that instead. Uh, they just haven't started. So that will be done in the spring, which is Which is why they were willing, remember when she was here, the last time she was here, she said, that's why they were willing to, to work on the park. You know, at one point we thought they were gone, right, we're gonna start over, getting it done before December. That wasn't true, she said, no, they're coming back for that anyway, so they will do some of the part. So we set a live contract with Perkins, it has money left in it. And so we definitely need to make sure, um. Everyone's got their arms around that piece of it. Um, okay, the um, tip project, the state tip project still has a punch list to deal with. And we all know what one of those, which is bump that comes into building here. The wall on Spole Street, they've got, was too tall, and then Karen cut down to do it, so that's gonna be done. So Mark is working with Karen to find where, what the time is for the state to come in and do their process on their piece of project. Okay, so to do, right, so to do this. Um, new sidewalks, so don't talk about sidewalks, and then we get to the art discussion, um, but sidewalks, as Amy was pointing out. Take a walk and get done. Um, so that, we really haven't started very much on, we've got our money that has been recommended to. From our committee, so tonight we'll talk about whether we're ready to at least say, yes, who wants this money for this? And then when Calbro comes on twenty, we'll start talking then about. How to get this process, you know, what's procedure to be to identify the sidewalks that we think are the best to put in. I mean, we've got, a lot of work been done in the past, years ago, it's been made, put together, so we've got a list of sidewalks. Um, but they're probably, that's probably should be refreshed when people have a chance to weigh in again, you know, I mean, my neighborhood must weigh in. Um, so, so, um, to come. Um, so that's it as far as what might be on the um, interim new process list when they.
How about the new tip project?
Oh, that's actually, Sam, I actually give that on here, yes, a new tip project for Marlboro Road, tip project. Um, that Karen, it's approved, um, we've got proof, but nothing's been done to, to start. Talking about doing, so it goes from the intersection of, I guess it's Framingham and Marlboro Road, right? All the way into.
Marlboro, all the way to.
Into Marlboro.
The Marlboro Town Line, I thought.
When Marlboro just redid their roads up to there, yeah, yeah, I don't know who's right or wrong, I think it starts at the intersection. But anyway, there is a approved tip project that we've done, nothing.
That's, that's a great one, because that gives potential to get a pedestrian or bike way. Sort of east-west there, you can only hit across the causeway.
Alright, so there's a, um, okay, um, Sam, you're making the S M.
Just a quick update on Assabette, um, Algonquin does an outstanding job, but there is another alternative for high school. And it is Assabette Valley Regional Technical High School that, uh, I think a lot of people don't have a very good understanding of. Uh, we, uh, one of, one of seven towns in the primary areas for Assabette. We have about a thousand students, uh, great programs, they've got all the usual academic kind of things. But a variety of other vocational programs such as automotive, manufacturing, biotech, culinary arts, hospitality. Computer programming, web development, plumbing, metal fabrication, carpentry, cosmetology, HVAC, electrical wiring. All places where they're great jobs out there. And uh, they have a showcase event each year, and this year it is this coming Thursday. The eight, six P M at Assabette, which is uh, near Marlboro, near. Walmart up there on Route eighty-five. Uh, great opportunity if folks are interested in seeing, uh, learning more about Assabette. Considerably go to that, you can check the website, um. It's again, uh, an opportunity for um, students who are looking for more vocational kind of things locally. And we have a portion of the seats in that program. Uh, it's actually turned out to be moderately competitive now, it's interesting. But again, great thing to look at and, um, hopefully people will be aware of it, they're making choices about where they're going. Have children for the high school, but it's a great resource, and I currently encourage people to check it out.
Can I make a pitch? For Assabette as well, tomorrow, there is uh, on twelve seventh from nine to twelve, it's an all evening breakfast buffet. By the way, if anybody's interested, it includes omelets, baked order potatoes, bell, twopots, toppings, groceries, and breakfast meat. It's great, this was posted online by a mom whose son goes there, so it ties in. In the.
They have a culinary program and they have meal service periodically there too.
Yeah, so tomorrow morning is a breakfast buffet, so.
To um, to cater some events, senior center.
Great resource.
And a great breakfast tomorrow.
Okay, so Mark, I see, I know this. Okay, so. We're gonna wait until we get down to, to, because. It's an agenda, we've got A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H.
Hold.
So. The update.
I, I can't.
But we talked about the bus, we're just gonna do the two things together, so at least it doesn't have to get up, I'm just gonna. Okay, so we're gonna hold A, B. C, D, E, F, G, H. I, oh. So how many, A, H, and I? Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve B. Are you making, you made a motion? So I made a motion, Chelsea's seconded. So we made a motion to approve B, B, G. Okay, so all favor B, G, sorry. Okay, so now, A, same you have, A.
I've got, um. Something for qualities, I guess, mostly squatters kind of things, but.
Anybody else have anything besides Sam?
Just a little stop.
Eleven, one. Um, line eighty-four, I think it should be residents who purchase electricity from National Grid will see three hundred percent price increase starting November. So thirty percent price increase, I'm not sure where that number came from. The talents of the town will see a thirty percent, so it's not, not the talent actually.
So you wanted to say?
Residents who purchase electricity from National Grid will see a three hundred percent price increase starting November one. That was why we sent the postcard around these. And that's it for me for that one. Eleven fifteen. Several small ones. Line ninety-nine, P W P B, letter you were originally. Line one twenty-five, one twenty-six, one thirty, and one thirty-one, Mr. Bowles' name is spelled, two L's. Line one thirty-five, Martel, doesn't have two L's on it. Their name is Marcy Jones. And they are C I, Jones. And line one seventy-four, Jones again. And line two twenty-five, Mr. Perry, his name is spelled, D A R R Y. That's it for me for eleven fifteen.
I, I, um. Have one on eleven, one, and I don't remember where you. Touching at the line fifty-one. It's a green, it's glad field, and I think it's. Okay, eleven sixteen.
So that's it for one, that's it for fifteen, now one sixteen.
Eleven sixteen, uh, line two, the date should be Wednesday, November sixteen, I think. And then, that's it for me, eleven twenty-one. Uh, line one sixteen, Jake's name is spelled J E and A S. That's it for me, and all small things, Bridget did a great job as usual.
And on, uh. Eleven twenty-one, line one twenty-two. Says, interim D W P.
Um, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve all four amendments, minutes as amended. One favor. Alright, um, A, um, alright, H, so, Andrew?
Yes, I, I have a question about, so I understand that the increase in the. Spending cap on the revolving is to enable the expenditure for the. The T box. So, and there were two absurdly different bids.
Yes, right.
And one of them was, the low bid was eighty-six thousand five hundred eight. So, in the second to last sentence of the number, or the third. So the bid cannot be awarded till there's sufficient plumbing available to pay. If we're, is it worth? The, um, the increase in the spending cap is. It's a good, healthy amount above the lowest bid, but you put out the bid. See what the, um. Bids come in and, and then increase the um, spending cap to enable you to. Award the bid to the lowest bidder, I just. Wait, you can wait to see, um, the only reason I kept it on here is, um, is because. Advisory is committed to take this up at the meeting on the fourteenth, then, right now there aren't razor thin majority. They need pretty much everybody to show up in order to, so if they're able to get a meeting, I'd love to get them to take care of. Doing something with the cap, I know that this board is a little more regular. Um, and, and we can handle it at that time, I do want to point out one thing, so I did go back and look and I, I. Um, I think some of us were gonna be assumption that the current cap is thirty. Um, current cap is seventy-five. It was increased at the last town meeting and it was passed on the consentor's vote. So I went back and I was updating the warrant for twenty-three for next year. I went to update the number, the number was seventy-five, I went back and looked at the vote, loved the setup, so, um. You know, uh, a number of people had said to me, it's thirty, and I said, it's not thirty. So now that I went and took a look at it, so it is seventy-five, um, I'm fine with waiting. If, if you want to, wanna wait, I'm still thinking I'm gonna push forward with advisory, simply to get a vote on. You know, to, to get their approval on the books, and then the board could adjust, well. I'm gonna ask you then for the same thing, but if you'd like to wait, you absolutely.
But if we're gonna do it eventually, why?
I, I'm really. Just asking a question.
As far as what gets spent inside of a revolving, I guess, you know. You'll make it bigger than you need to, because the only controlling move is the job that you're seeing come out.
So you, you do control the revolving fund with the bylaw, which does specify exactly what you can spend the money on. So that, that is where the control is now with the bylaw, because it said, here's what funds you can have. And here's what you can do with the fund, and when we set up this golf revolving fund, is any money received can only be put back into.
And I think it's a good chance that we will get a accepted bid. In the spring, it's important the architect who works with these folks and pressure was to get it done quickly here, which kind of.
Just moving forward, um, so the board is aware as part of the paving bid that is out that, um, the chair referenced earlier. Um, we do have in there, um, pricing to do John Wilson drive as well as develop parking lot. And the intention is to carve that piece out and, um, I'll work with Mr. Valentine. So that we can make it part of a bond, so that, um, we can then, you know, pay off that bond. With receipts from the, um, from the golf revolving fund. Um, now that is probably gonna hamstring us for a couple of years, depending on how many years we do that. So, just wanna give you a heads up, that is the intention, that's, that's the number one, I know we talked about irrigation, but that is the number one issue. That I hear about more often from public safety and golf. So.
Andrew, you satisfied? Okay, so do we want to, um, not do this, or do it?
Do it, yeah.
So, a motion to approve and request to increase golf revolving fund spending limit to hundred thousand dollars, seventy-five.
Second.
Alright, Chelsea, I'm just gonna abstain. From the executive session, yeah, because I fell off. Alright, um, so there's, there's nothing to do with it other than to prove it, so, um, motion to approve the executive session meeting minutes on November twenty-first.
Second.
Why are you not, no?
No, Sam had asked me about the question.
Okay, so, let me do it again, so a motion to approve the executive session meeting minutes from the twenty-first.
Second.
One favor? Okay, so four zero one, Chelsea is one to abstain from that. Okay, right, alright, move it on, um. Um, so, can we put it up? So while she's doing that, um, and I sent her a written email, so that has changed as far as the things that, um, we could consider. Um, first thing is, we know that we did not approve the hazard premium pay, um. Three thousand dollars, but what we didn't do officially is decide where to put it, we got two choices, that's another right one. Because you got, that's not the right stretch, that fifty-five can be down there, so it's one. Well, it shouldn't be, because I said it to Melanie, um.
What's the bottom number?
Well. Go up a little bit, Vanessa. Alright, so it's probably right except for maybe on that bump, so the fifty thousand for the, that was down at the bottom. That was for the, seriously, you're taking, I mean, we're back at four hundred, so it's okay, we can still talk about this, and. Okay, so, um, we've got a decision as to where we wanna put the three hundred, we've got two choices, I think. Um, and the reason I'm trying to do this tonight is so that we know what's in the tax relief bucket going into the budget season. So there's, there's a method to this here, okay, so I think you need to put into that, if that's what you wanna do. Or you decide to drop down to the bottom, so that it's basically in unrestricted funds, so that we can still turn it back up every one too. So I don't think it really matters, because we always move it to. So do you want it to go into the, um, real estate tax reduction bucket officially, or do you want to drop them? I'd like to see it there. Alright, Andrew Sam, you okay with that? To put it into the, so Vanessa, now can you go back a little bit? Move it up.
And is this really, um, considering that you're. Were anticipating another shift?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely, well, I also think hearing that we're being a break. I mean, every meeting we have, uh, you know, we got dispatched, we're, we're talking, so there's, we have very little good news.
Put it where?
To put it into the, so Vanessa, can you go down more? Sorry, to, with your, this. Okay, so into the general park and tax lien residence bucket. So that two forty would go to five forty?
Yeah, I guess I'm okay with that, although I still think that, um, in my mind, it's not a final, this, this point, there are other things.
No, that would take down taxes a point and a half if it sits there, okay, so, okay, so. Motion to, um, basically move the hazard page three thousand dollars to the general park and tax lien residence. Right, on the favor? Okay, so that's one thing. Okay, the second one is, this is, we don't have to do this, remember Karen, um, believes that the true removal contract's gonna be forty thousand. So that fifty-two, so Vanessa, can you go up just a little? Just a little. Truly, we, we, we want to see the line, say, up one of them. Okay, say so, okay, so see the fifty-two, so that probably should be twelve, but we don't have to do that yet, we may want to wait till we actually truly have a number. I just know we may have another forty right there.
Plus you may blow up the trees.
Yeah, yeah, so it's not, right now we think that's. So the next one is, um, um, tension, so, um. You perfectly said tonight as far as what the downtown people consider, um, we know that we've been talking about this for a while. you perfectly said tonight, as far as what the downtown people consider, um, we know that we've been talking about this for a while, um. If we decide we want to take it off the ARPA list, um, and put that two fifty-two down into the real estate, um, reduction bucket, it doesn't mean that we are going to never consider national grid again. Some, um, you, um, after what they said, but, um, I just don't know, I still don't think the timing is right on, um, you know, we don't know much about the property, don't know how dirty it is, et cetera. We don't think national grid is trying to sell it, so I'm looking through somebody else competing with this, so I guess not worried about that property going to place, so it might be that we've got a better use of two fifty-two today, um, but that's just.
I don't worry about the property going anywhere, but I mean, we've been waffling downtown forever. And, uh, I actually do believe that, uh, doing something with wastewater there could open the door to, uh, drawing some new business and vitality there. So, I mean, it seems to me that, uh, finding a way, I don't know what it would cost to find out about the condition of that property. But I'd be interested in figuring out, you know, for what, ten thousand dollars, twenty, whatever the number is, can we get some testing done to find out what is, could you talk with National Grid? If in fact it is, uh, there's hazardous material there, then that would be, I would think even more incentive for them to bargain on a better price. We were, we could find a way to take on the responsibility somehow and figure out if, if there's something we can do with it, for example. I have heard anecdotal in that towns do buy those kind of parcels at capital, and with reparking or build a building, whatever, and not have to worry about it has kind of liability. So maybe that's true, maybe it's not, but to know more, I think, would be risky, considering that for another five years, continuing to see the same kind of problem and pressures, my bias is to do some things, which is simple.
So can I ask Mark a question? So the twenty, if a twenty-one E is done, is it National Grid's responsibility to do that, or is it the town's responsibility?
So.
Typically.
The town, the town can request for it to be done, but National Grid's got to agree, because it's their property.
Um, right.
And, so, I mean.
I'm all for having it done, Sam.
Yeah.
Let me just say that. I'm all for having that done.
Historic, historically, you know, when, when I've been involved with twenty-one E's from the town.
Yeah.
And it's been on property that we're interested in, or curious and everything in that, it's been the town that's been the responsible party to do that. But you need the, you need the access agreement with the property in there to be.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that whose responsibility, whether it should.
And, and.
You're done, subject to, you know, due diligence, right?
Yeah.
Action agreement, you got a diligence, and a lot of times the buyer asks the seller to furnish a twenty-one E, at least a phase one jet wing, right? So there's different ways to do this, but if the, um, preference of the, um, select board is to at least spend ten thousand dollars of two fifty-two now, because I have never gotten a clue, I'm never going to support doing that unless we know what's, you know, I don't want to break that down, I guess.
Yeah, I actually ran into, from time ago, several years ago now, a gentleman who used to work for, I guess, Mass Electric at that point, and told me that there is a small, uh, transformer
Yeah.
station back there somewhere, which did not have a very big footprint on it, that actually exploded one night, and created a fireball, a lot of excitement, and clearly that had been, could have certainly created, or at least, you know, transformer fluid, or whatever, there's not good things in there. But his comment was, and they use a very small portion of that property, it'd be very helpful to know if that was the only piece there, and grid, obviously, across where that was, to do some testing, or they maybe had other records that showed how we had storage, all sorts of crazy things all over the place, et cetera. But to know, I think, would be usually helpful, uh, as far as what we want to do next.
And I think, too, I've heard over the years of there being an underground stream, stone, stone book stream, or whatever, that runs through downtown, that might want to do that parcel. I think as we move forward, that might be useful information to have, because I don't know if that may or may not affect wastewater, hopefully it wouldn't, but it might just be good to know in case, just so we don't run into another.
That, that probably wouldn't affect wastewater, because you would build a wastewater treatment facility, you know, on top of it, and you might have a leaching field there that probably, again, would not be protected deep, but, uh, but anyway, knowing about what's there, to me, is worth
Yeah.
considerable amount. That, that says, what do we want to do with grid? Do we want to be aggressive? Do we want to walk away from it? The, whatever.
So where is the motion to have property, where is the thing we call the stuff, though? How close is it?
Some distance away, down, down in School Street.
So, should have been, all right, so it sounds like, um, you know, like.
Yeah, and vibe we're having, because I think that part of me thinks that this is a unique item in that it's the one ARPA item where the select board can't just approve the expenditure, it happens, because it needs to be approved by town meeting, and you can't really make a, you can't just go to town meeting and say, well, we want you to spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but we don't know whether it's a little easier. Yeah. So you need to, need to do at least something. I mean, then also the question then will come up, well, what town can do with this property? Yes, that's a big question. Okay, yeah, so then, then the, uh, stormwater management system is something which is a whole other, which there might, I think it's very interesting, but I think there's going to be a lot of very skeptical questions, and it'd be, yeah, it's hard to estimate the cost of the, yeah, yeah, but, but there, there's at least some value in having it happy, as you were saying, with the zones available, is parking, and you could, um, so I think that there's multiple uses.
Yes. But several years ago, Carolyn Dyckman actually had a carve-out for a hundred and fifty grand, in one of the state capital bond bills or something, that, uh, I don't know if that's totally water under the bridge at this point, how those things work, but it might be an interesting question to ask, is there some way that that still is accurate?
So the way, so the way the bond bill worked, I think, because that was discussed before, um, and, and I think it was just a particular procedure, is that, yes, money was included in bond bill, um, but getting it passed through the legislature, and then getting the governor to release it, are two very different.
I understand.
So roughly twenty percent of whatever gets voted, actually never gets.
Yeah, but the question in my mind is, is that, that particular piece totally dead now, or if we've been fined by medical support, could that money still be there, or do we have to start over to get state support for something like this? I don't know.
I think it's still, I, I could be wrong. I'm looking at Vanessa, she can throw something at me if I am, but I think that, um, I think that appropriation sits there. Technically sits there, it is available, and if you can make enough of a case, and enough, kind of, of a convincing case.
I mean, Senator Eldridge, when he's cutting the ribbon.
All right, but I did, but you, but what, what Mr. Denny can draw, but I think it's, it's really the crux of the argument. So we're going to spend a quarter million dollars to do what? And, you know, um, I know Mrs. Star, you're not that conversations about, uh, potentially, um, as, as you put it, the benefits of grid wanting to get rid of this parcel to the town, the town, you know, doing this, you know, taking it off their hands. You know, conversations that I had, again, this was months ago and everything, and that with their, um, with their team that deals with property, is that, you know, the property was acquired through ratepayer money, therefore the ratepayers need to get the value back for the property. So, you know, I, I think that two fifty-two number is a real number.
Yep, in their minds.
Well, and, and, you know, and like I said, and then the question is, so what do we intend to do with it next? And because the two fifty-two now leads to these level of expenses, certain things, and obviously, I guess, of the ball.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I'm looking at another brand new state project in, like, January, the meeting. Oh, I agree, Richard, I agree. So, we can't answer any of the other questions, other than tonight, we could ask Mark to basically, um, come back with proposals to do a twenty-one E.
Let's see what it costs, yeah. What if it really needs first and contact National Grid? Yeah, they would even be willing to, like, require our standard for purchase sale in order to do the twenty-one E.
They might, because if you're going to say, wait a minute, you're just going to expose this land as dirt.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
But why not, and start the conversation, and say, you know, that we're interested, um, that we need to understand more about the property, we would like to know, hey, the phase one.
And maybe ask them to tell us what's there in terms of their records, you know, what was there? Is there a substation, three transformers, or?
I, I think I'd rather just have them agree with twenty-one, you know, for phase one for twenty-one E, simple tabletop, that's going to give you all in.
Yep.
So, Mark, years ago, too, with, with some level of uncertainty, I guess, on moving street right now, what's going to happen, and there was extra capacity in the wastewater with, um,
Mr. Kwan.
Mr. Kwan.
Still is.
Is, is there, might be an opportunity there as well, to at least have a discussion again, and see if there's any opportunity to tie some of this in through there. And again, that then leaves the door open, Sam, on what potentially the town could do, parking.
Yep.
Whatever, on, on that.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not aware that that issue has been raised since the last EDC meeting that was held on the same lines. So if you can remember how long ago.
I know, but I'm just saying, it, it might be a worthy conversation before we start talking six figures and, and doing something that there may be another opportunity, yes.
Yep. Again, it could be separate issues in terms of wastewater.
Yes, absolutely. So, we should probably explore that as well.
So we leave this, if it is for now.
Well.
And Mark will start the presentation, and then, I get a phase one?
I think, I'm glad we're doing this, because I think one of the things that gave a war of urgency was your description of the meeting.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I, I did not want, just, small and not ideal situation.
Every eighteen days, that's a, also. Okay, so we're going to leave it there for a moment, we're going to shorten, and then, but the next one is the sidewalk. So remember one meeting with capital, next meeting. So what I thought we might want to consider tonight is actually going to officially improve it to seven hundred four thousand dollars, um, tonight, um, for sidewalk, so that capital will, you've done that, um, and then, um, and as we go toward having, you can have a super ten place, try to get a plan in place to start working on the sidewalk.
Yes.
I mean, I think everybody here wants that, yes.
I think we just need to have a clear path. So, yeah, I agree, yeah. And I also wouldn't be, like, I also think we just created some flexibility, when, let's say, we, we unite. Okay, so now we have some buckets we can move around, so I think keep the seven oh four, and then, you know, that we can always increase it, if we end up having more than what, you know, if we go on with a higher bid, we're going to get more efficient.
Oh, I don't think seven four is enough to be prolonged. But it's a down payment. So Vanessa, can you go down a little bit more, um, on the spreadsheet? So when we do that, we dealt with every single thing that the ARPA committee has recommended, other than, we'll leave National Grid alone for the moment, um, and then the two BOH pieces, um, small pieces at the bottom. Okay, so we're, we're making progress here to, you know, make sure we abide by the dates of using the money. All right, so I'm going to make a motion to, to basically, um, agree with recommendation from the ARPA committee to put seven four thousand dollars of the ARPA money into the sidewalk, um, upgrade new, but.
Second.
In my favor. So that's it for the perfect session. Okay. Regional dispatch, and, so Chelsea, feel free to chime in here when, when it's appropriate, um, but this, we, uh, remember, the last meeting, we decided that, uh, we were a little, um, concerned when we heard the young lady in Poppington basically tell us in our committee that Poppington's like, we're nothing about the dispatch process, right?
Yeah.
Um, so we agreed that the next step is to get the four towns together and really see where they stood, so that, because we, we heard the timing, the news coming up, if we want to get this grant cycle going, we've got to get moving here. So, um, Mark reached out to his, um, peers in Grafton, Westboro, Poppington. Um, the proposal was to have sled four chairs, have the town manager and administrators, um, and then have the group that been working on this from, from the seven towns, now four towns, to just say, either Grafton or Westboro said to make up a group, just have to be four chairs and four, four town managers ministers. So that's who met, um, this week, um, this will be fun. That's what I'm surprised, so last part.
Yes, no.
Yesterday, yesterday, yeah, sorry. Um, okay, so, um, we met yesterday, you're right, met yesterday, um, on Zoom, so the eight people were there, and it was very productive and very interesting. So, to kind of, um, cut to the chase, um, clearly, Westboro is on board. They've been trying to do this for a while. This is like their third or fourth time they've been trying to put this together. Um, clearly, Grafton was on here, and in fact, the Grafton town manager, who's fairly new, has done this before in another town, he's actually been this process of putting a, um, small, regional together.
He, he did this out in Western Mass before, and, and, um, just briefly, the, um, there were four communities that entered into what I'm, uh, to move forward. Um, but at the end of the day, there were two.
Two, yeah.
Two that did it, uh, and they actually, um, retrofitted on one of the existing, uh, public safety spaces in one of the communities. Um, and the epilogue is that now they're looking to construct, um, uh, a completely new building, simply for regional dispatch, up there, so.
Um, and then Lady said the two came back.
So it's so.
All right, so the one that is, um, not as far along in the process, this Poppington, which, we sort of heard, right? But certainly said more than those, that, that part was, was important. Um, but they're not as far along. In fact, the sled four chair, um, Amy said she watched our meeting on sixteen. She found it very, um, constructive, and she liked to do the same thing in Poppington. So, um, said, okay, um, the town manager, um, was probably the only sort of stuff, uh, of, I mean, very, he has some concerns, um. He clearly would like to see the facility being in Poppington. There's a school that started a marathon, that's what he'd like to see, and Westboro's got a, a new place in Westboro and that they want, it's not the original place, that was in the, um, another place. Um, so there's definitely a couple of, um, competing spaces, that'll have to be, so, so what we agreed to do is, um, uh, we talked about the timing. Um, we talked about how to get it, the, uh, two towns are, the three towns are fully on board, Southboro, Westboro, and Grafton, as far as where we are today, um, agree that the correct, better process to do is an IMA, not do the letter that was down a level sparse, what we get, so to do the IMA, that was very clear, no one even thought about that, do the IMA. Um.
Popping didn't came around to that position at the end.
So what we said is, this is going ahead in parallel, Poppington, you know, continue to reach out to the public, but let's go ahead in parallel, and, and move this forward, so that we can meet the timing on the grant, if that's what we're going to do.
With a four-town IMA?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, um, Westboro is, has the Foxboro IMA. Grafton has the one that he worked on, um, in Western Massachusetts. We've got the one that's attached to the college report, the sample. So, um, what Mark and I thought might be the better path for all of us is to let Westboro take the lead on the, a draft IMA, and their town manager seemed to want to do that. Um, put it together, rather than all three towns doing their own, and then we try to see where they are, so it's just kind of hard for us to, so let them grab, we respond to it. So we, we think that might be the recommended path to, to the foreview, as far as the next step goes, um, so that we, we can move forward with this timing. So that's how we left it. Um, and then, since then, you know, we've thought about some more, so tonight, um, I'm hoping we can kind of vote on the next step, um, as you know, this is Chelsea's goal, she's been involved all along. So then, maybe part of what we decided tonight is to just say, Chelsea, you will then, uh, take over this, right, as far as representing us. Um, and, um, you know, keep this path going, the, the way you think is appropriate. But that path would be to let Westboro draft IMA, we respond to it, all right? Um, continue, um, I did ask the question, I wonder what you would do to the numbers that Poppington didn't go for. Um, and the answer was, and I'm not sure I buy it, but the answer was, well, the state will know their job, and they'll give you one, um, okay, maybe. Um, but there's going to be a lot of hope here. Um, Collins, center person, is wanting to hold draft the grant, um, for the group, um, so we already know that for them. It sounds like, um, one of the people on Zoom has a deep relationship with someone that's been involved in the nine one one a long time, so we've got that, so sounds like everybody's pretty optimistic that this should, um, get, get done for this cycle. No one knows yet what we're going to apply for, though. It's not like you're going to go in and. No one knows yet what we're gonna apply for though. It's not like you're gonna go in and have it almost get shut. And so may apply for someone to help us, money for that. But apparently the state's been kind of guidance. That's what they think as far as what we should apply for first and stages so that we even.
So it may not be a multimillion dollar. Um it may be that, you know, you have enough funding to do the first piece and look to hire an executive director who will then help the shepherd. Rest of the process and then you would get subsequent awards to help with the construction pieces and the operation pieces, so. Um and and again, you know, the town manager, um a town manager, town manager in Grafton. Um very helpful because he's been through this and he understands how this works. Um doesn't get too excited about this and everything of that because he's got a confidence level as to I've been through this, I've done it. We've had a big group, we've had some people grow up out, you know, and and you know, and this is how it actually does work out. So um I think there's, I think there's good confidence. Um it's good to have. You know, I know Grafton is not contiguous with us and everything and that, and we don't do a whole lot in terms of of regional services. Um lift them or falls and everything like that, but I think it's gonna be good to have them in the process for the experience um and what they bring to it.
Ask a couple of questions.
In.
Uh the Westboro, the Westboro site. Is there anything particularly attractive about that in terms of redundant fiber access, redundant power access, et cetera? A building they happen to have.
So it's it's it was a dirty property, um and you know, brownstone legislation cleans it up, whatever. So I guess it's clean now. And Lisa found an article um about where it is. So I know, I don't know the answer to your question as far as that goes, but um. I do know it's on Brownfield's site.
I think one of the, yeah, one of the things we did talk about in the meeting also was that. Uh we would love to schedule site visits for both the Center Street School parcel in Hopington. And also this site in Westboro so that people get a feel of the site, the location, you know, what we're starting with.
Yeah.
And you know, and then what we we'd be looking to do with the building, uh with the property.
Is the Hopington location interesting in terms of redundancy for fiber and power?
I have no idea. It's right off common in the downtown um.
Don't plan to visit on my marathon day.
It's the old location, so um that's the old location where the colleges would all meet um to get your assignments. Uh and they've now shifted that up the street to to the old school, but.
And I think too, Sam, on on the Westboro side, I had read that um they're they're planning like passive recreation.
Yeah.
On there as well. It could be what trails potentially or or whatever, something that would benefit. People.
But the Westboro, the Westboro board has taken a vote to utilize that property for dispatch. Is um is it clear what Hopington's concern is at this point or just they haven't vetted it enough yet?
Do they have a specific concern that says that we don't think it's good for us because of A B and C here?
I think it's more they just are a little bit behind where we are as far as processes. I don't think they are opposed to it. Um yeah, so I just think they've gotta get caught up as far as making sure that they have discussed it with their.
I guess my overall high level concern is that uh, I mean, I think the the sort of the direction. At a high level, there's a fundamentally clear regionalization function. But the question is, you know, how do you do it? How many steps? How fast? I I remain very interested in Foxborough. For example, and that that, you know, do you take two steps when you can take one step now? Gonna wind up in ten years or fifteen years or whatever.
And this book will tell you that I also said Foxborough is a great solution. If we're the only one going, we only care about Southboro or if. Any of these other people are going with us. And um do you wanna tell them what the Westboro chair said? There was, there was no interest from the group to to move in that.
But she's got the promise for all I think.
Yeah.
Um interestingly, Foxborough wasn't there. Oh, okay, I know, no one's been there.
Yeah.
So Foxborough is the bridge to someplace else and they moved where they they are right now. But the IMA that they signed did specify the location. They just changed locations there. But you know, we're not, we're pretty close to being almost to the path of. No return here as far as our decision here. So that's, we've gotta be, we've gotta understand that, you know. Once we sign IMA, we've decided IMA, you know, um so, you know, until then, you know, we could still. Decide to do something different.
Even if you sign the IMA, you still can do something different. There is still, because we did talk about that as well, there's still an extra strategy until you actually can start to spend the grant. That's when really we are locked into it.
But as I've said before, I'm interested in what the numbers are. Really have not done much analysis based on my knowledge that. You know, if we went to Westboro, what would that mean in terms of state funding and out of pocket for us over the next five or ten years? And if we went to Foxborough, what does that number look like? I I guess it, where I am at this point, I don't think it makes a lot of sense for us to go it alone. For a while here, in particular, we're gonna spend more money on technology apparently soon. And I had the opportunity to spend some time at the dispatch dispatch center with Kyle. Seven, I guess. Yeah, very, very helpful, very enlightening. And I think there's some things that we could do to uh. You know, get a little more mileage out of what we have now for it to, but ultimately the choice is to hire five or six more people. To go it alone and make it work, right? Which I think is real steep hill of the prime, from a budget standpoint. So I think we gotta move in one of these directions, but again, I'd like to see more numbers. Maybe that's some place where the capital committee, the advisory.
So we have. The numbers in the addendum, so and the capital plan has. And I know Chief Achilles is on and Chief Knowles here. I don't, I don't know what the number is off the top of my head, but it's built into the capital plan for the next. I think it's in the next three or four years, so I don't have.
For which, for which?
Are um if we were to double in size for personnel.
Yeah.
And supervisor, blah, 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 you're probably looking at nine hundred thousand dollars.
When?
To double.
Um.
With with FY twenty three.
And then after that, uh that nine hundred thousand continues additional. They can take advantage of that technology, right?
What? So I'm talking, so it's nine hundred and seven thousand for capital, three to four years out from now.
New new technology.
Yeah.
But that's no people.
Right, so then if you double your budget, our our dispatch budget is like four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So assuming you just double to have two on, that doesn't include like if you had to hire. A supervisor, you're talking about a hundred thousand for that. Right? So you're, you're, you're over nine hundred thousand dollars. Plus, you don't know what's gonna happen with our grants that we talked about. So we get seventy thousand dollars for grants, so right now, so you'd be at nine hundred thousand less than seventy, assuming you don't get double.
Right.
Of that. So that's just to keep and and then on the Holland Center um operating budget. It's um. About three hundred thousand dollars. Um. This would be if we went in with the four towns, not the three. I didn't have time to crunch that today. I'm sorry, it's a cost savings of three hundred thousand dollars. Um so it'd be, they're quoting a hundred and forty thousand, but I think we have to be careful with that number because you're gonna wanna build some sort of. Capital amount in every year into some revolving. Right, so I think, I think you gotta be careful with. I I just, I don't, I'm. Just saying, I don't think we should commit to the hundred and forty thousand because I don't think that's really what we're gonna be looking at. I think we need to be more conservative. Than that, but I think if you're, if you're looking at pure numbers, you're talking about nine hundred thousand dollars to double the apartment department. Assuming we do that in FY twenty four compared to um a hundred and forty. Okay, so let's, so in other words, just say we've got the numbers, um we think we do.
But Foxborough, we don't have numbers.
Well, we, he said that day, we think Foxborough is probably two fifty or so, yeah, going a year. Um so I think we've got a good, we can give a good question, but. Well, but you know, they're saying we're going four forty to one four, right? Um the capital piece, that's not gonna be three hundred a year. Um so we're still talking about saving some money.
Well, there's no capital piece of the nine hundred thousand that's gonna be doing.
Right, and and the. The state funding probably will fluctuate too. So I think we need to, you know. Do, I think we do need to be conservative in what we are. I don't, I don't wanna sell a bag of goods that this is gonna be. A three hundred thousand dollar savings every year. I I I, and this is not about saving. Money, right? It's about what is the best? What is the best position we can put the town in? And I don't, I I am not convinced that doubling in size is that answer. I think long term, regionalization is the right answer. Um but I just wanna be careful of throwing those numbers around. I do think it's important to know what we're signing up for, but I think we need to be conservative.
But again, I agree, the big reason to do it is to get the coverage support that you need operationally. Operation wherever it is. And again, if there is reasonable cost saving plus the operational redundancy. That's a pretty good answer.
So since Chief Achilles is listening to us, I do wanna point out something that he said that I wanna make sure is clear. Um he had said to us recently that if we don't um go forward with the grant cycle this year. And he believes he's gonna have to ask for, you know, money to enhance the local dispatch operation, right? Well, even if we go forward with it this year, it's not gonna be in place right now. You know, we're still talking. It at least um three years, um you know, plus, just so you know. What the gentleman that was here at the last meeting in sixteen said, he said three, it's what he think you out there. So we're still a balls away from solving the problem that Chief Achilles and Chief Noel have identified, right? So we gotta understand that, um so, you know. Said, if we don't do it, then it's funny, but we're still not gonna have a place in the year, um no matter what.
If we did, let's say Westboro. Um. Would we have to spend the um nine hundred thousand or whatever on technology upgrades?
No, that that's, the hope would be that we would not have to. And maybe I should have asked Chief, if you want to come over, just raise your hand. You probably can answer that better than I can on that topic. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me? Um so the the question was, uh if you could repeat it, Chelsea?
Just wanted to validate that if we get into this grant cycle. Um and move forward, that the intention would be to not have to upgrade, upgrade the current dispatch equipment. That you have in the capital plan for nine hundred thousand in the next three years.
That's correct, and I I just wanna make sure that people know that the um. I think in our capital, we identified the equipment as ten years. So it's in the next six to seven years, we'd be setting the nine hundred thousand dollars. That was just to replace what we currently are, upgrade what we currently have. It was no enhancements. To our system, so it did not include anything with radio towers. Or any improvements to uh overlook. Um our overlook site or any other antennas, so um that nine hundred thousand was just replaced what we currently have for equipment.
You have the factor in. One more thing to add, I would just do have to remember the factor in the possible employees, the staff, our current building. So that's just one more thing. I seem wanted to get lost in these transactions.
So depending on what we decide to do for a station going dark.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just something that, thank you.
During the meeting, yes, we were here, um. Westboro talked about, they actually did, they went back and looked at their data. For I think two years as far as what the impact, because they are dark right now already, um of being dark is. And they, every single time, I guess, someone came into their um police station. And they were able to um basically bifurcate the reason being there into a couple of buckets. And in the end concluded that being dark didn't hurt anything at all. There was a solution to everything. Um regardless of what the reason was that somebody had come in, so they. After they did their work and studied the actual data, people came in last few years, they were still having their decisions first. So they did see that.
So I think, yeah, I I believe. You may be confusing Grafton, but maybe not. Grafton did a, um I do recall Grafton did, and they kept a law. Yeah, they were just interested in embellish, they they did a law, but every time somebody came to the station, what services they're dealing for, ninety percent of them required. And um it didn't make any sense to hire additional police officers just to sit there. You know, to do something that's very easy for somebody to commit into someone's a police officer and help them down. The other ten percent, um as um the manager sort of put it. Um was um fill out this paper and drop the box, fill out the form that's hanging right here and drop it in the box, type of thing. Um and so they looked at their peak times when people came in and they hired a part-time admin. Uh to command and to help to handle uh any of the traffic during peak times. Um and that seemed to work for them. Um but, you know, again, one solution that works for somebody may not work. Somebody else, and and that was something that I think Hopington also struggling with as to how to deal with that going dark issue. Um so that's, you know, again, I think it's gonna be, that's gonna be individual choices with the community is willing to accept.
And I think geography plays into that as well, Mark. I mean, we are, we're on eighty-five, Route nine, you know. Grafton is kind of off the beaten path to some level, and I think. To track the traffic that may come in might be very different here in Southboro versus a a Grafton, so. Um I would have some concern, and I still do, when it was going dark, so.
I mean, I think it would be, you know. I would be interested to see it. I don't wanna see the chief wilt over there, but um it would be interesting to have that, to have that. And understand what are people coming to.
Yeah.
You know, what are they, yeah, what are they, what are they looking for? So more understanding what the services are, because there'll be people that will come out that will oppose it. Simply to oppose it, right? But, you know, you need to have the factual data to back up the decisions you're making. You know, similar to, you know, Mr. Stagger saying, we need to understand costs. We need to understand some of those pieces as well, because that's how you're gonna be able to sell this, or are you gonna lose it?
Yeah.
So.
I agree. Okay, so what um I think we should try to decide tonight is following. Sounds like all five of us are still um on the path that we do want to um consider regionalization. Right? There's no insane stuff, only what, right? In some form or the other, right? Yeah. Um so if that's the case, um we've identified what the next step should be, which is um. That Chelsea and whoever she needs to, example, the gentleman that was here in the sixteen, um whatever she thinks. Um takes it from here as far as working with the um at least Westboro and Grafton on the IMA.
Is there anything we can do to uh nudge Hopington? Help them get on board, which I think, and again, I would not look at any of those numbers, but I gotta believe it's the four and better than three in terms of participation. For the rest of it, would you agree, Chelsea?
Yeah, but I don't think it's a showstopper. Because part of what Chelsea is going to consider, do they wanna build it bigger than it needs to be so you can add on people? Yeah, there's a whole lot of details to be worked on. So to Hopington, and again, take these numbers with a grain of salt. Their cost per community is two hundred and thirty-three thousand. Grafton's two sixty-six, we're one forty, and Westboro's four twenty-nine. So you're taking the two thirty-three and we're gonna get the smallest piece of the.
Yeah.
So I I'm actually not overly concerned and chief, either chief, I know. You're, you have relationships with the Hopington um chiefs, I. I think, I think we want to go in on with people who are committed to. The project, and I think some will just take longer than others. I think we were pretty proactive about talking about this as a board publicly for. Eighteen months now. I don't know that every community did it that way. No other select board from any other other town on the seven that we're on. Was on that working group. I was the only select board representative. So I think we were more proactive. On making sure that you all were aware of it and we. Um had those public forums earlier than maybe these now, so. I I'm not overly concerned about about it. Don't forget, there's other, three other towns who went through this process who can always. Say, okay, we're actually liking what you're try- trying to do and so I'm I'm not.
Let me flip it around. Is there anybody else out there hovering that we might approach, saying, hey guys, we're gonna probably do this?
Yeah.
And do you want to get on board here? There's an opportunity. And do you want to get on board here? There's an opportunity.
Yes.
More is better.
I I think, and I think, um, I think you'd be short sighted to build a dispatch center.
Remember South Fox were all that.
So I I really, you know, I really think that. Either you're going to be on the outside of the wave. Or you're going to be waiting for a vote.
Under the wave.
At some point, and you know, look, I mean, this is the way the state is going, you know, um, you know, the chief, you know, to tell you that when it comes to. You know, the nine-one-one grants and everything, and then, you know, they target them for certain things for certain, and if regional dispatch is where they want to go. They're going to begin to target those for those communities that are regional, you know, and and so, you know, we want to make sure that. Um, if we have an opportunity to um stay ahead of things and move in that direction before we push. I think that, you know, there was some benefit. One of the other things we did talk about at the meeting is um. Hopkin getting on the ground floor of these discussions is obviously, um, you have some say in the structure of the governance. Of, you know, do you want to put together um something that has a model like Foxborough? Which essentially is this, its own entity, which essentially you're just buying the service from them. Do you want a governance structure where it's each community has a vote into, you know, how this happens, how this moves, how everything happens?
Um, which I'm actually less interested in operation, actually, but that's another issue.
I think from a liability point of view, it's a whole other ballgame, and and, you know, I think Foxborough structure is. Somewhat attractive because they have to provide you with service.
Yeah, and also, uh, again, I would hope that uh this moves forward, I guess, Chelsea and Mark, that uh. Maybe you look at the map that we've seen and then the whole, and it, and I should say. Maybe a friendly call to the folks who are out there.
But it's not going to happen if we're going to have, I mean, it's too. You're not going to get somebody new starting right now and be ready to go in January grand, um, you start talking.
That would be helpful, too, just to know if there are six others who are interested. Then I think it affects the kind of facility you think about.
Yeah, I also, I also think, though, that the the chiefs have their districts that they're. A part of, and if we stand one up in Westboro, then there's, the state's not going to be supportive of one going up in. Happington, or, right, so, so we're going to take that part of the market, and I think they have. Good relationships and go to their district meetings, and they'll know what. What's what's going on. I don't know that adding someone right now is. Is a good idea for for us at this point.
I'm not suggesting we bring somebody in, but if there's interest out there, it might affect what we think about building. First step, we need to leave space for three more there.
What, you try to build a space that you govern to add.
And just to be clear, when we're talking about adding. Um, and. Either chief, feel free to chime in here. Um, if we add, it would be like a separate pod. That we would add. It would not be flipping staff back and forth between teams, right? Like, it's it's really. The oversight and then the space within the building, not. Who is work, like, we would still have the same dedicated team working the four towns that initially. Or either the three towns and maybe add a fourth in, but it's not like you're going to have. Ten towns serviced by me. I could work ten towns. That's not how how, that's not how I would intend to set it up in. Okay.
Just again, let's keep our head up here and see if there's other interest out there and think about it.
I think we need to, I think we need to figure out what we're doing first, and then, I I just, I think. This has been a long process, and as we know, we went all the way down. I think, I think the communities around us are well aware.
Again, I agree, our our focus is pretty priority here.
Yeah, I think, I think we have a lot to get done between now and the grant cycle. I don't know that adding somebody in between now and and that period is really beneficial.
Not suggesting that is likely or whatever. People need to know, I hope, and think about it.
Yeah, I think once you commit and start building the center, that's going to happen. It's going to. Surrounding towns, they see one up and up and run like yourself. You know, so it does, when you see it, you really know what you're getting. And knowing there's one local, I think that's key, and that that's the key for me is is in thinking about. The staff from all these towns, and to be able to, instead of our staff potentially having to go to. Foxborough, there might be something closer, you know, to home for them as well, and um. They they know the towns as well, and um, I I just think it's it's going to create interest. Um, around surrounding towns as well, once they were committed and we started process.
I also think we can rely on the state to help get, like, the state will, the state's looking to.
Yeah. Yeah, because grants are going to start going away. They're all going to go regional.
Or more, at least more.
Okay, so have we agreed on the next step? Which is to basically um um annoy Chelsea officially to to go forward. This point with the um other two towns, and I have said yes, for sure. Um, to work on the IMA, and we're all going to be invited to go see the places, everybody.
And then the next step after that would be a future meeting. And it probably would be, can't go to the stage where. Each select board has a bunch of edits that are kind of irreconcilable, what's going to be a fairly streamlined. Process. I know you're getting ahead of myself. In principle, yes.
I think it's realistic, though.
What I.
Yeah, I I think it's a a realistic concern as you get forward, yeah.
Do you have an idea when that happened? I'd say some, sorry, I'd say sometime in the next two to three meetings. I think you need, you need to have something in place for the grant application. And so we're looking to apply, um. If it would be to apply late January. And we have to have something done fairly quickly. Yeah, I don't think this is. This is different than an IMA to look at water service. This is different than an IMA, but, you know, so. I I think this can be fairly streamlined. Um, I don't think this needs to be public. So.
There is a template.
And there is a template, and there there we do have a couple of different versions, you know, um, to look at.
State's done it twenty-six other times, so there are, you know, we're not first here, um, and so they should be very helpful in.
And we also want to attend the training in January for that.
And that's one of the prerequisites we're applying for the grant, so I think at that point, you get an idea of who actually is applying.
Right.
So they, you will know your universe of competition, so to speak, as do well-suffering for grass.
Do we think there are any other new regions out there?
He didn't know, so I don't think we know. He didn't know.
But I think as you said, we're the whole of the donor. Yeah, right, so I I think it's very attractive if we're looking to cite something here.
We're the first one to build that home.
And we're looking to put something that, you know, would have the ability to take on more at some point. Um, I think it, I think it's an attractive option for the area and the state to have something. So.
Everybody agree? All right, Chelsea, all right.
Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you. Um, okay, um, so the next one is to um review the. Policy, revise policy for the lieutenant position, and then the related job description. Okay, so, um, Mark, you want to kind of explain?
Sure, so the um. Policy is is something that's been in place for um for a number of years. I don't know how much it's actually. Um, uh, been revised over the years. I would prefer that to Missia. Um, she's got more, more tenure than I do um here, but um. Uh, we worked with uh this federal. Um, Attorney Federal to try to put together. Um, some changes in the policy which gives the board um some flexibility. As to candidate, uh, again, the policy is driving. Um, those items that would not specifically be addressed for other SAP employees in the personal life. Um, and the the policy is going to help to drive the discussion. Um, you know, the board um did, you know, has created a side letter agreement. With the uh lieutenant um candidate that you've selected for the position. Uh, you did this with former Lieutenant Newell. Um, and essentially said, here are the things, you know, with the SAP, you did all the things in the bylaw, but these are the things that carry. Either from um from the union contracts, such as clothing allowance. Um, and um, or, you know, this is, you know, how we, how we do the position. Um, you know, out in addition to what the SAP provides for the employee, so um, this kind of. Gives you a little bit of structure as to um how the board will address. The issue with the with the um, um, with the preferred candidate.
Okay, so it's my understanding from talking to Miss Hale and to Mr. Purple that. This policy hasn't been changed in about fifteen years or so. Something like that, so it's pretty old. Um. So that dust it off, and then you see the changes that are being proposed to it, um, but to my mind. There's one real significant thing on this, which is the ability to uh. So to kind of back up a little history, um, the lieutenant before. When Chief Newell was lieutenant, um, Sean James was eligible for overtime. I don't know why, don't know the details, um, well, for to, um, when. My new took the job, um, this position was not eligible for overtime. Okay, so here we are, um, now with his replacement, and the proposal is to. Go back to what it was with Sean James and to let it be eligible for, and only the details, which it would have been already. Um, but true overtime, two, time and a half overtime for anything worked over forty hours. So that's to me the biggest. Change in what we're looking at here.
I think the one thing to point out with the agreement, the way that, and I and I appreciate um the way that Attorney Federal has crafted this. And um Chief Newell and I had discussions about this, um, because you got to remember the chief is responsible for the budget. He's responsible to manage the budget, and he's responsible to um keep the budget balanced. Uh, and, you know, I know that there are things to get in the way, but you want to try to, you know, control what you control. The way that um Attorney Federal has put this together, um, is is to identify the position. Um, that is eligible for overtime and and for details. Um, and um, we'll notice language in here, um, it's it's um as a sign. Um, so therefore assigned by the chief. Also, there is the piece at the end. Um, which talks about, you know, to be, you know, um, that that you can't. Uh, trades on the um, the collective bargaining agreement with the union members. There is a. You know, and I would, I would refer to the chief to take you down that yellow brick road if you want to talk about. You know, how overtime is is, um, how people, you know, get overtime shifts, detail shifts, um, you know, the. Um, and the ordering that that goes, obviously, um, anything that lieutenant would be eligible for. Would have to be after it is exhausted, a process within the collective bargaining. Um, and that, um, you know, the the other thing too to consider, um, lieutenant is making significantly higher. Um, um, pay rate than a regular police officer, uh, before sergeant. And therefore, uh, overtime at a, at a lieutenant's rate is going to be significantly more than it is, you know, for a.
Why, you want to come one up so you can, um, for the participating is, we'll keep talking about.
He was happy, just let me roll. And if I got it wrong, you would have gotten up quicker.
No, everything was uh correctly explained it. Uh, it would be first order refusal to the union members. Uh, if it was coming down to a situation where uh union members were forced for a shift. Then it would be introducing the option of the lieutenant to take the shift.
This was, this was a discussion um at the table this year. Uh, and and the chief has basically stated it as was discussed. Is that the union was looking to try to relieve the pressure of officers getting forced. Um, into overtime positions if no one was wanting to take them, was hoping that the lieutenant position could be a release foul. Um, for that, uh, and lieutenant could take some of those shifts so people wouldn't get forced. Um, however, um, the issue was tabled and then and then died on the line simply because of the letter. That uh Lieutenant Newell had with the board, which specifically prohibited him from taking overtime. So there was no sense of putting something in place that couldn't happen. Um, now here we are. And so I would think that the, uh, as the chief has stated, spirit of those discussions is going to guide. You know, how that would work, and I think the um, impossible. You know, um, path that the union would agree, you know, with with lieutenant, you know, um, having overtime shifts. And uh, the details, I think this is separate, it's a separate thing, uh. I think it's the overtime piece that we just need to.
Well, the details are, he was always going to be, he or she was always going to be able to do this, right? I mean, the chief take details, there. Everything else felt, right?
As long as everybody else had uh the option to take them, and there was no other.
Right.
Uh, takers.
So the chief, yeah, the chief, you know, and and what I had done with the previous chief is basically, yes, you could work the detail, but I needed to. I needed to be um notified of it before um they actually took it, so.
Can I bring up a concern, Kathy? So, one of the things I've kind of talked to Mark and Vanessa about this as well is. Um, one of the things that's not taken into account as we do this, and I understand it's an SAP position, but I think it creates a problem is. A lot of these officers. By their contracts have more vacation than is allowed by the SAP. So whomever takes this position is actually, it's going to be a debt to a detriment to some level. At their vacation time. I don't know what the answer is, but I think we need to to consider this as a whole, as we look how. This can potentially be fixed, and um. Uh, for instance, if somebody's here, I don't know, I'm going to say fifteen years. Um, through the union contract, Vanessa or Mark, what would it be eligible, five, maybe six weeks vacation? And. Five, and then through the SAP, for that same time, they would be capped at four. Depending if you were hired in four or two thousand. Okay, so I I just think it's. Right. So again, I think we need to consider to some level, at least have a discussion is is. We we look to fulfill this is, it's in some ways, it's a detriment because they're losing by stepping. Forward, and and I know, Mark, you disagree with me on this, but I I just think we should consider it because.
I'm sorry, you have the chief sitting right in front of you, and we want to talk about the vacation that he had under the SAP. And and you know, again, it is. It it's a career path, right? And you've got it, you know, you determine, you know, I I I've talked with the chief about, you know, the things that. He wanted to do in his career, where he wanted to be, and the things and the the sacrifices, the decisions he made, you know, in order to get there. Um, I do think, you know, that there are benefits, you know, to this as well, um, you know, in that. You know, your, um, you know, your quality of life, um, you know, your your base bay. Um, you know, things, things that you normally would have had to work. Overtime shifts, detail shifts in order to get that level of income.
And I get that.
And and so I I do, but I do as well.
I would be doing a disservice if I didn't bring. You understand my vacation, because the reason you're seeing this happens is because of, that's why this step ended back in here is because of what you're saying, too. We just, the vacation wasn't up in here, but that's why the ability of times could break in. Fair enough, again, I I just.
Oh, believe me, were you, okay, so can we just stipulate a couple things to make sure we're all on the same page? Um, this process so far. We've all agreed is going to be just like the chief was interim. And, and do we all agree that to qualify for lieutenant, you have to pass a. Bachelor's degree or your degree? That's what the.
Yes.
Okay, ready with that? And do we also agree that there is a limited? And do we also agree that there is a limited number of internal people that need that qualification for it?
Apparently there are two.
Right, this is for that. So two people that are um vulnerable inside to apply for this, right? So it's not like we've got tons of people um who we're going to get to that had um, they could could step up here. So, um.
And just, and just, it is a limited number, but they're both very candidates.
But my point is, we're trying to end up with a policy backed up by the SAP um that is conducive. To doing this. Right, so that's what we're trying to do tonight is see if we can end up with what we think is appropriate for trying to go forward to post this. Um, and hopefully, um. Have someone step up.
And to Lisa's point, um, now I understand the vacation thing, but I guess I feel that you're actually going a considerable distance here. In terms of the overtime change. And so, at least in my view, that's should be sufficient. I don't think we, I don't feel a great obligation to thank people totally all on all accounts here. I think we've got a substantial amount here in terms of actual income opportunities for this, and so I'm satisfied. That shouldn't be enough, I guess. But I'm okay with.
And would you want, Lisa, the lieutenant's position to have more vacation than the chief's?
No, that's that's the problem, Kathy. You've got officers that have more vacation than the chief. So a- a- again, I I don't know where the issue lies in this, but I just feel. A- a- and again, this is, uh, maybe, maybe this is the answer. I don't know, but I just worry that, you know, we're we're putting people in a position and they're going to lose something. In order to better themselves. Is it a bad thing? I don't know, but I just. Felt I needed to at least bring it up and and voice my concern. Um. On this, that's all.
I mean, I I, you know, there there are there are officers who whose gross pay. It's more than chief. What in mind, you know, probably approaching a superintendent. Now, they probably have to work the four thousand hours. And accommodate that, and they have those opportunities to, you know, um, but but we're talking about, you know. Um, you know, trying to. Again, some of the things here, you're talking about leave time, you you know, you're talking about pay. We're closing gaps in different ways, some things we can't. We can't fix that. So, you know, I think, I think this is an effort to try to address. The issue in the best way that we can without, you know, and one of the things Miss Hale always talks of, you know. You've got to try to have some level of equity, right? So you want to make sure that you're not doing something drastically different. For another employee that's covered under the same, under the same set of rules and regulations.
I get it.
This makes it somewhat special. I think that the things in here don't go so far out of bounds. That, um, you know, that that it's, that it's something that, you know, the board shouldn't consider. But I do think that it tries to, you know, um, to close that gap a little bit.
Fair enough.
I think it's a reasonable effort, and if it turns out it's not sufficient, we don't get any internal applicants and we go outside. And you and you don't have that problem in terms of.
Or reconsider this. So. Chief Newell, do you support the um ability for lieutenant position to be eligible for overtime?
I do.
That's hope. Can I ask you a question? Do you know how many shifts per year you do for a second?
Um, I don't know per year. I would say.
Or month?
Uh, month force, it'd say only like one or two.
So that's all this would be eligible for, is if it was going to be a horseless. And what would happen if it was during the day?
If it was during the day?
Yeah.
So let's say. Still, it would be enough. And that's where I'd like to have some sort of. Uh, say, um, actual force part of it for the overtime, at least have, uh, you know. And if it was during the day during working hours.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, yeah.
I just want to make sure that we're not creating a loophole where.
Well, at least Monday through Friday.
Well, right, during the work, during your seven to three shift.
Would it be in a, an executive, an administrative position? Uh, and and the working hours for the administrators, Monday through Friday.
Yeah.
Uh, that's, it would just be strictly for that.
So you would still do a force in during the day if you had that. Okay. And are you, would you need to increase your overtime budget to accommodate this?
It would, yes.
By how much would you increase?
I wouldn't be able to tell you right now exactly, but I can definitely get figures. Before, you know, before we need to. But it is something that I would have to operate within an existing budget. Um, so I have to be prepared for it.
Because this would be, this would be applicable on FY twenty-three. This wouldn't. We wouldn't wait for this for FY twenty-four, right? This would be upon.
You've got a budget, you got a.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I would be curious as to what you would increase your FY twenty-four. Um, budget for, because. I need, I think I need to.
Yeah, I do have, um, I don't have it with me, but I do have some numbers if that is the case.
Okay.
My business industry would bring some up, so I can get those too, for examples.
Chief, just, I'm sorry, just one follow up to that. I'm assuming that when you're looking at. The number of force, you know, um, force that, you know, force ends for um short-term positions. And you're saying you're willing to a month. That's really um based on no other issues, no FMLA, nobody, pretty much fair staffing. So obviously that would be exacerbated. If you've got somebody on a military leave, somebody who's out sick, somebody break that type of thing.
Yes.
You know, I just want to point that out, that those opportunities.
Yeah, yeah. There's the same rule applied to details as far as who gets them. Um, do you have to go?
Through the entire.
And then what's left over could go to lieutenant.
So if a day is in the schedule where, um, you know, people put their name down, they want to work a detail on Wednesday, whether it's a day off or whatever it may be. The lieutenant could essentially now put their, their, well, sorry, this same way before, but to put the name down for a Wednesday evening. You know, after the workday, and if there's an open detail, you can get calls, nobody else wants the detail, but it goes to everybody else.
So there's really no way you can promise one of the two candidates. X amount of overtime, X amount of.
It's all fluid.
There's opportunities, there's nothing guaranteed.
Of course, they know how it all works. They they live it, they.
Yes.
Um, Mr. Rooney, we see your hand up. Uh, we're going to bring you over, so be patient. Um. Okay, so.
If if nobody wants a detail, then it goes to other departments.
Correct. Well, I'm sorry, and we'll go to traffic constables. Uh, and if nobody wants it from there, then we go to another.
Yeah, so one of the things that we do with the communication officers contract this year. Um, uh, if you recall, I think, um, the previous chief had um set up a training program for some fire.
Yeah.
Right, so um, communications officers settled their contract. It said, we'd like to be next in line after the police before fire. Um, and so that opportunity exists for them to um to take uh details. Um, assuming that they they've gone through the training and everything, so. Um, so that that is the, I and I'm not sure that maybe they can event that yet.
Uh, the details?
The dispatches.
Um, they have here in the.
But limited.
Yeah.
So for example, um, when, remember when the bridge placement work was being done, uh, you know, with weekends. Um, you know, we could not find enough people, you know, to do that. I had the chief calling me saying, look. If if I don't take the detail, then they're going to run the traffic, they're going to run the detours through the neighborhoods. Which is going to create a lot bigger of an issue type of thing. So, you know, it was. There are those opportunities. It depends. We had a lot of big projects. And everything that where we have a lot of detail work, so, um, you know, I think a lot of our officers. You know, had as many details as they as they wanted, you know, at some point, that for Main Street and for other projects.
There will be opportunity for you, we'll send a chief, everybody to work the details for the outside to any time.
I had a couple of small points about the draft, but if you want to talk about it, take picture item.
Well, to me, that's the big picture. I mean, that's what's changing here is, uh, do we want to, um, basically, pull this position up for. Overtime. Um, that just sounds like it's fair.
I like the answers, yes, so.
I mean, I would like to.
Well, is it, you willing to get the position posted?
Yeah, like I, you know, I've been with that second in command for since February, so I I would like to have some vision.
So, I mean. I haven't asked a lot of questions, but I have, I agree. Rather, I have a lot of questions in my mind. I mean, I think what you're trying to, there's kind of balance. Reducing some of the inequities that there then as you move up. And, um, whether this is balanced out by the fact that. The additional compensation through overtime through detailed assignments that are really only the. Through the lieutenant, if they're not otherwise, it does not be worth. In the union, and I think that that's a fair balance. Factors.
What, does anyone know the top ahead, what the um range of this position is on the C P?
There's actually pretty wide range.
I mean, we went above that.
Yeah, city. Uh, good, they have like twenty-two. Sorry.
It capped out at one eighteen.
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
And both candidates obviously are on the point because I've got a bachelor visa, so that that's. The point for that is twenty-five percent, yes, twenty-five?
Twenty for bachelor was twenty-five.
Yes, sorry, yeah. That's another.
Think the max is like fifty-six dollars. With the Quinn in it? No, that's for him. So you're paying ten and a half. Okay, so. Yeah, this has been a while. So do we want to try to get this resolved tonight as far as this policy approved? Um, the job description approved so that she can post it, or are we not there yet?
Let's do it. I would, I think I'm ready to do it.
Hi. Do you want to answer most of the writing question? Okay, so, um, Vanessa, can you bring over?
While you're doing that, could I add two points here? One, the footer is on the page says, policy updated two thousand and two, so. Change that. And their language about it, where the person resides and says something about maybe able to move. Uh, within twenty miles of Southborough. I mean, it seems to me that ought to be more positive than that to say, we'll move. To within twenty miles of Southborough, that within six months of the appointment or something like that, which may not be relevant for the current candidates, I don't know, but. That to me was total loophole there, so we're not required of it, so we're hoping to tighten that up a little bit.
Both are very low.
Yeah.
They're both well within it, right?
Yes. Yes, but might as well fix the policy if it turns out. Needs to get potential candidate.
I guess. Are you here, Mr. Rooney?
Scott, can you hear me?
I can.
Yes.
Well, first of all, thank you for uh recognizing me. And uh, happy holiday season to you all. I apologize for not being there and traveling. Um, as I think Ms. Cook and Ms. Brockfield know, um, I have a particular affinity. To our public safety employees. Um, this town has got a phenomenal group of police officers and firefighters. Um, and so full disclosure, uh, whenever I have an opportunity to advocate on their behalf, I I will do it. I I kind of have a basis or understanding of what I'm talking about. I grew up in a house when my dad was the chief of police in Waltham, and as a prosecutor, I worked with. Uh, departments as large as Boston and as small as as Belmont, Belmont and Stowe. Um, and I think it, it, you know, I mean, it's axiomatic that if you are getting a elevation or a raise or a promotion. There should be a corresponding uh increase, or at least there should not be a decrease. Um, and I've I've had numerous conversations with Chief Newell about this, and and I agree. That there are two very viable candidates that he has in his department right now. And I'd be very, I'd be somewhat cautious about Mr. Stever's comment about, listen, hey, if the two there don't want to apply, we'll go outside. Because issues of uh cohesiveness and morale are critically important in these types of departments. And if you have sergeants that do not want to apply to for lieutenant position. That just creates a whole other set of problems. And it's really not a road that you want to go down. Um, I've looked at the 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 incomes in the uh, the lieutenant positions in Marlboro, Framingham, Hopkinton, Northborough, Westborough and Ashland. And my comments may be more appropriate for the personnel board, and I've. I've I've reached out and and spoken with Mr. Rubenstein in that regard, but. As chief executives, I do think you have a role in this. Um, to look at not just the starting salary for lieutenants there. But when you do that, you really need to compare apples to apples and oranges to oranges, because. In Southborough, the lieutenant is the second in command. Uh, which there are so many, as Ryan, as Chief Newell will tell you, the responsibilities are enormous. In a lot of these towns that I just mentioned, there's a uh, there's uh steps between the lieutenant and the chief. That being captains and deputy chiefs, so the jobs is not as onerous. I do think they should have an opportunity that next lieutenant for overtime. And also, there's a question in my mind, and I don't know the answer, and I'm not sure that this is accurate, and maybe the chief can comment on it, but. It's my understanding that a existing sergeant, if he were to go to the lieutenant, also loses seventeen administrative days. Um, and again, I I I've not researched that, I just have it in my notes. And I don't know if the chief is able to comment on that. Um, so, you know, I, like I said, I I am scheduled once the personnel board is, has this discussion to. Be there and and to advocate for uh, the next lieutenant position. And I just wanted to put that stake in the ground to at least get you guys thinking about it, because it's, it is an important decision, and it's not one where I think you can say, listen. If the two guys don't want it, we just go outside. Um, I think that would probably be the worst, worst scenario for the town. Um, and Ms. Cook, thank you. Hopefully you all have been able to hear me, and again. I apologize for not being there in person.
Thank you, John, but as you can probably tell, we're trying to um figure out a way to make this job um. Um, enticing to the two internal candidates, that's what we're trying to do, so, and. I don't, I didn't hear any specific suggestions from you. Um, if you've got specific suggestions, um, let us know.
Well, again, like I said, the benefit package. Right now, as I understand it, a lieutenant can um sign up for a detail, but can only get that detail. Uh, chief, if everyone else or all the uh sergeants and patrol officers are unavailable. Is that a union provision or is that in the SAP? I don't know the answer to that, Kathy.
It's a union.
CBA, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, what about the administrative days? Is that in the SAP or is that a union position as well?
S and K, that's okay.
Okay. Well, I think the advocacy there, then Kathy, would be before the personnel board, at least for that component of the discussion.
But you're basically saying, um, change it for one position, but not for anyone else, and it it would be. You change it for lieutenant, but not for, and then the chief has, you know, less days than lieutenant. So that's our problem is, you know, you've got the chief too, um, who did give up a vacation to become the chief. Um, wanting to head to chief, so we've got it, you know, we're in between these two. We've got to careful about.
Yeah, I I I can absolutely appreciate that. I'm not sure what happened or how it happened under Chief Paulus. Again, I maybe was not paying as much attention as I should have been back then. But from the, to go to where Lieutenant James was to when Lieutenant Newell was, um. I think that was a a significant change. And no, I don't think it was a significant change in the compensation and the overall job. And Ryan, Chief, Chief, Chief Newell, obviously, I I am not advocating against you. I hopefully you know that, guys, uh. I just want to try to at least address this lieutenant position, and to the extent it benefits you. Again, the, I I am here, and as I disclosed, as an advocate, Kathy, as opposed to, you know, trying to. Uh, make all ends meet.
No, I know you are, absolutely, I'm, I'm, how well you mean this, so, I mean.
And I don't, I don't look at it that way, John.
I'm sorry. Okay, good.
Okay, so, um, I think we're back to where we were, which is we agree that we want this to be, um, eligible for the time. Um, but we haven't changed much else. Um, I've got some minor things. I don't even, why did, why did, after we have.
That isn't, that isn't the.
Okay, well, that's, I mean, that's fine to, um, put it there. I just never have seen that in any.
I actually had to make use of that when a prisoner punched me in the face and took my glasses, did that with them, so.
And then what is a D Fibrillator stipend?
So T FIB stipend, it's, um, annual, um. Like a stipend for being trained in use of the Ethan.
Once you get trained, and you get it every year, then, when, um? Okay, um, so anyone else have any other most persons possibly have something?
Comment that, uh, we're basically, it sounds like, uh, waiving some of the Fair Labor Standards Act. Requirements here for exempt, non-exempt. I'm assuming Kate signed off on that. I mean, we're doing something that's consistent. She's the one who created the language. She has done, um, similar grievance.
Yeah, I mean, what we're doing is reinforcing, uh, the benefit that the FLSA is trying to protect here, so I would think it would be consistent. That's the dicey that overrides federal law.
Well, you know, it's usually the other way around, is you're not, you know, when you're supposed to rock.
That's why they did it. So I think we're not, we ought to be on solid ground here.
I wouldn't do this without her. So, you know, I, it. Wanted to make sure, and again, with the timing, and, you know, and, um. Forget who just said it, Mr. Murray, somebody, you know, wanted to help the chief. The chief has actually been alone, so to speak, since February. Had lieutenant acting since February, lieutenant that became the chief, still lieutenant. So really, it's, it's, it's been a hole in the team, and I think we tried to set this up so that the board could have a good discussion, which. I think you've checked that box tonight on this, um, but hopefully give you a pathway to move forward, so the chief can begin to move forward, try to fill that hole. And, and try to at least do that, you know, get that piece of the team in place, because you've got to remember. That likely is going to mean another process further down for, you know, for advancement.
Mark, I'm gonna ask a good question, but I should know the answer when I don't.
I hope I do.
Other towns. Is lieutenant position contracted position, union position, or SAP position? What, what is the norm? I mean, I'm not looking to recreate anything. I'm just asking a question, if you know. I, I should have checked myself, so.
I get, you know, it, it depends, um, if, if, you know, civil service community or not. You know, there, there's different parameters. Um, I think that normally the chief's position is the only position. That's contracted, so the chief is the only one that has the master of law statute. For the contracts and by a chief, similar, the town manager, town administrator, right? So they're the only ones that, that have it as a brain. So most often, it's going to be the chief.
Looked at to, uh, someone in the surrounding towns have a command staff union, so whether the sergeants, sergeants and lieutenants in the command staff.
Our union's not big enough to break it up into.
I get it, I get it. I'm just trying to figure out if, if. We're doing something outside the norm of what other towns, but obviously we're not. This was the best avenue of fun. Thank you.
I have a process question. If, if we approve this, then do we actually, uh, post it? Look for applicants, and regardless of how many applicants we get, do we do an assessment center? Kind of thing. How does that normally work?
So, um. I'll answer.
I'm trying to figure how, how long it will take, assuming we do this.
So I, so. The chief is, the chief is certain, there are two internal members to the department who qualify, were eligible to become. Um, one of those members, um, recently went through an assessment center. Already, so, you know, um. Depending on who puts in and how it plays out, there may not be a value in doing another assessment center. Um, you know, um, and then again, you know, so. I, I, I don't know what I don't know till the chief puts out the advertisement and you see who puts into the position.
But in theory, this could roll out pretty quickly.
In theory, this could roll out pretty quickly. Uh, I think it's going to roll out fairly quickly, and the chief is. Uh, again, it's in his best interest, and he's pretty committed to moving this along, because again, this process is then going to lead to another process. For another promotional, you know, opportunity that needs to happen, so. Um, uh, I would, I would, I would think he would move pretty expeditiously on this, and so, you know, hopefully you've got, you know, something before you. You know, early February, um, depending on how things go.
Um, Lisa, you continue not to break, I don't know. Kathy, I'm fine. I'm just conjuring everything. Uh, again, I think, I think it's important to move forward. Again, I, I voice a concern I had. I completely respect where everybody's at on this, so I'm, I'm, I'm good. Okay, what are the type posts are?
The footers on the most of the pages, two thousand and two.
Okay, so. Get the footers out of there.
Yeah, and then the other, the residency requirement, be able to reside within, I'd say, reside within twenty mile.
It does say must be. Must be.
Must be able to, but what does that mean? So, I mean, physically, I could move, but I'm.
Resigned. That's, that sounds fine.
Sorry, I work with people who spend a lot of time finding usual place, who find people's contracts.
I'm able to do it, I just didn't do it.
So, so, so just to, just to try and, and, and. Figure this out. You're okay with the beginning of that, must be able to successfully complete all of it, and, and then. And get rid of being able to.
Yeah, must.
So get rid of those.
Anybody else on either? All right, so, um, I will make a motion to approve the, um, revised police attendant. Policies, um, as in front of this, and the, um, lieutenant, um, job description. With the two changes that Sam has.
Thank you all very much.
So I'm going to jump to the last one first, because Lisa's coming after that one. Okay, so, um, I just want to get a list of departments, committees, etc., that we want to see over the next, um, few meetings, so slightly seen right. All committee, and now come to me. So, Andrew. That's a good one, yeah, especially talking about the discussions we had about downtown. Yes, I'm getting one from everybody. Sam, next.
Um, I sent you a list. Just one. Arts council.
Arts council, okay. Open space. So, uh, youth and family in May. See them in May? Okay, because of Middle Hill? Yeah, I have, I have a whole list of items. That was mine. Okay, so we got, and what, but that's, that goes through the next, um, two minutes, right?
Okay, so this is not necessarily budget related.
Send to the budget. No, this is the part of what they did. Update, what's going on. An E D C, just talk about this maybe, and so.
Well, just another one to throw up there is potentially. Because I know we sometimes have joint meetings that are often sometimes difficult to schedule. The planning board, they're often kind of on an issue basis. Um, I mean, I know that there's things that are always on the planning department, but I think we can use, uh. Periodic update for even just one kind of came up a little bit earlier today about. The, um, bylaw, the planning board was. Going into, which maybe was, how did I interact with something Melissa was doing? Um, and also, um, this came up at the shop scene meeting. Last night, the status of the MBTA community's compliance, where there's a deadline of January thirty first. And I think there could be some value, even if we can't have a. The scheduling of the work, it's up on the night, maybe on Tuesday night, finding a time that works for all of us.
I bet you have to, I put plenty of them. On the January third agenda. So we saw, did you guys get the email? Um, anyway, they, they, uh. So they want to help weigh in, um, so I said, well, because we got to the end of the month of January, so we did it on January third, because twenty is really is. As far as, um, agenda. Okay, what about SPAC?
That'd be good, yeah.
And, and we're going to meet with M P C at some point too, so we got more. I'm just trying to get. Next year, right, so we'll keep going to week. They haven't been in in a while. I have it on, I've, since I've been on the board. Since I've been in the board. They don't have a whole lot going on, but again, just new members pointed, and it just might be good to check in.
If there's a long list.
Go on. All right, so let's stop, we got. And you got it, you got, you got a really important thing to do. Thank you. All right, uh, so that's it, except for D B W, so Lisa. One minute, I'm actually gonna leave, leave. Good night, all.
You have some stuff for you tomorrow.
Okay, so Ms. Roger is officially accused herself because her husband is a D B W contract, um, contract even worse, no. Okay, so now, um, so Mark, you want to do your, um, update first?
Uh, so just to let the board know, um, that, um, first round interviews are happening tomorrow and Friday. And then the second round, we is looking to be scheduled, uh, the end of next week. Or the beginning of the week after, um, so that I will meet my, um. Self-proposed deadline, getting names of finalists to the board, um, before the Christmas holiday. And then, you know, the, the board, the board schedule, um, those final interviews. Um, and, um, I believe the chair made a comment that, you know, you're really not. Interested in trying to meet him between Christmas and New Year's. And so, yeah, like I said, and so that, you know, you can have that discussion, so I think, but, you know, I think the board will. Uh, has the possibility of achieving, holding your final interviews, and possibly making a selection for a candidate. Um, before, um, January sixth. And then at that point, you'll need to look at. You know, um, contract negotiations, and then, um, there'll also be some love and notice period. Um, for a candidate, so again, we're probably looking, I would say. You know, maybe near the end of February for, um, the first starts, which leads into. Uh, and I, and I, and at first, I want to apologize, um, you know, um, we try, you know, from my, my perspective. Try not to give you things late, you know, try to make sure you've got time to look at everything in that, but, you know, um, this has been. You know, this has been fairly fluid, and so I try to get you things as soon as I can. And, you know, if there's things that you want to call me, I want to, you know, ask questions above and that, I, I, you know, ask that you do that, just to try to make these things move. You know, move all the meetings. Um, so you had a more packet, um, spending maybe, uh, more during. Being, uh, into D B W superintendent. Um, and, uh, basically, the beginning of that basically outlines what I just outlined. Um, I have had, um, conversations with Ms. Gallagher, um, and she has expressed a willingness to stay, um, beyond. Um, her January sixth resignation date. Um, she, you know, she's looking to commit, uh, up to six hours in person. She'd be available remotely, um, as needed. Um, and, you know, she was seeking a rate of a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. I will clarify, you know, in other conversations that I've had with her today, she really is, is more interested. In helping to transition, um, whoever the successful candidate is. Into the position when, when that happens, um, and trying to bring them, help get them up to speed. She's more interested in that piece of it than I think that she is from January sixth to noon person for the bridge period.
Which is what I read in the rate, it's pretty stiff rate.
Yeah, I, so, so that's, so that, I, I just wanted, I wanted to provide that color. I ended up in conversation today with her, and, you know, I wanted to make sure that. You know, I'm at least fairly presenting this to the board. Um, uh, I also, um, uh, recently, um, spoke, um, to a gentleman, uh, uh, his name is. He's recently retired from municipal service, um, and, um, I didn't realize, but he was a worker. And, uh, I happened to work with him, uh, when I was in Framingham as assistant town manager. He was a deputy director of public works. Uh, he then, um, left that position, and I applied, I, I provided you probably Mr. Rosenmeyer, so that you got that. Um, he, he then went on to work, uh, for the town, he went to sixteen years as director. Um, and, uh, then retired, um, just about a year ago. You know, he, he and I chatted about the position, what I'm looking for, uh, and, you know. Up to the twenty twenty five hours, we went to the position, you know, he's seeking, we're in seventy five dollars an hour, um. You know, I, I think he would, you know, we're not looking for somebody to come in and change things and do a reorganization. We're looking for somebody to make sure that things continue to move and to help provide the support that operations and the administration will need. You know, there are going to need, you know, we've got good people in the positions. But they're going to need support, they're going to need a front person, they're going to need somebody who's going to need to sign off on the decisions. You know, I don't think it's fair to ask people who are working at lower levels to assume the responsibility of the decision that the superintendent. Um, and, you know, so. I don't give you a recommendation, but I provide you the options with the understanding that. You know, that Ms. Gallagher is more interested in continuing, you know, in providing her assistance. With whoever the successful candidate is, rather than getting to a successful candidate.
This gentleman is not the registered professional in the area, that's like.
He is not.
Uh, how would you rate this, uh, interaction with the public skills?
He's got a very good demeanor about him. He's very, um. I would say his, his demeanor is very, is professional, but very, um. Receptive. He's got, he's, he's got a very low, low-key personality, so. You're not going to get him excited, you know, um, by, by, yeah, I, I think he's, um, he was always, he was very. Um, he was very good in the administration pieces, like, you know, that I recall, in Framingham. And, um, in helping to shepherd some of the projects, but a lot of capital projects. Um, in fact, we got to the point where they just decided not to, um. You know, to fund anymore for a while because they had such a backlog, so, you know, he was very good with that, and he did a lot in with the administrative staff. Um, and, and again, I think you need somebody for that public piece, and I think he can handle that piece, you know. He's got the personality that I think that would, would handle it, really needed him. But, so, so thi- this is something that's would be, uh. With one interim D B W superintendent for six weeks. So, I would, I would suggest, yeah, I mean, I would, um, I was talking with Ms. Hale about this today, and I think we'd structure the contract. Um, and I think we did this, um, in the period, and I'm trying to look, and I'm not sure if you were here. Um, this brought, she was left, um, and I'm not sure if she was either, but we hired. The interim police chief before we hired Chief Paulus. Um, we structured, I believe we structured that contract to a certain date. And then it was extended in thirty day increments, but, you know, in the town's expression. So I think we'd probably look to do something, you know, to the end of February. And then we could look to extend in increments based on my internet atmosphere, yeah, so.
This gentleman has plans that he's willing to forego if, um, we offer this to him, so it's probably, um. Um, considerate to make the decision tonight, um, he's got, wants to go to, he's got a cruise plan that he's not gonna go, but, um, he needs to know what's going on.
I'd say do it. I think we have a need and. Someone, someone has the relevant experience. Close enough, actually, yeah.
He's right next door, so he's very close.
So, um, and then. I'm sorry, no, what I, so I would, if you're looking to do this, um, you know, obviously. You can't have a superintendent and an interim superintendent at the same time, so obviously you would make that appointment effective. The seven.
Right.
However, um, you know, I'd probably look to do, you know, um, you know, in the contract to. Have available, you know, um, sometime that week. To be able to help transition a little bit, because I'd like to, I'd like to set up some meetings with, you know, the operations supervisor with. You know, the office staff to understand, because again, how many hours we think we envision? And then, and then having conversations to determine what we're thinking would take, it would not be more than the twenty twenty-five, but it might not be the twenty twenty-five.
But why not have an agreement that, that basically the contract employing, uh, until January seventh, at which point you've got to. Acting or interim superintendent.
Sure.
And the hourly rate for both of us, I would think that would make sense having that before we. Karen retires.
Remember that hers is Sundays and second were closed, because that's when the holidays, so it'd be the third, fourth, fifth and sixth that would, um.
I would, I would say, you know, start as soon as you're available, start getting up the speed and things. There's a lot going on, Kathy, if you pointed out, so if you've got time, spend time over the next few weeks here, chat with Karen very highly.
I mean, I, I think. And I think, uh, you know, getting that understanding, we get a great operations supervisor, right, personally. And he does a very nice job and he knows what's going on and, and what needs to, you know, to, to happen. In order to keep things moving forward. I think we just need to make sure that we can provide whatever support we need. That he needs from the top to him, so to have those conversations and understand that and what, what is the administrative staff? Looking for for support, you know, um, you know, for, for a lot of those things. I just wanna make sure that, that we, we give people what they need, you know, to try to continue to have that department be successful. In the interim while we're in between superintendents.
Yep.
Okay, Chelsea's got to relieve her babysitter, uh, any minute now, so does everybody agree that we are going to, um, offer the. Um, this gentleman, the interim job? And let Mark negotiate the, um, contract agreement with them?
Yeah, yes.
And I don't mean to break this out for, um, the time, but then, important question, so. From your memo, are you suggesting that Karen is also like available on call in addition to this gentleman boards?
We're talking about, I think, the position of the interim, yeah, so I think you're picking one or. Now, I do, I do, you know. I don't specifically know the answer as to, you know, um, you know, she couldn't charge us to take a call and pause. Um, I would hesitate to say yes. So, but.
Makes sense to have a contract with her.
But I think it's gonna, well, I, I, yeah, I, I'd like to have, I think we should have something. With her beyond January sixth, but not.
Understood, understood.
Okay, so I, I, but I, but I agree that I think there needs to be, if there are parameters, so to speak, I think we need to understand those. And, and the board needs to have some level of commitment to them before she leaves on the sixth.
Yeah, but hopefully she'll be available by phone or, uh, but on call if you will, from the interim. Superintendent. He has questions during that period and then when a new person comes in, available as a consultant.
Right.
You can structure that kind of an agreement, or.
Right.
And if we use it, great, if we don't need it.
And is it available or is it?
Well, I think you just need to get it on the table, right, so, um, it's clear and maybe, so maybe just, you know, put that together too. And then on to us as far as what, um, she had agreed to this first, what would be reasonable?
Sure.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to, um. To ask Mr. Pearl to, um, enter a contract with Mr. and I don't have to say this. Um, as interim D W director, beginning January seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Rule, um, sometime in February, um, with the building to possibly be extended. Any further discussion?
I have a, I have a slightly related question. I'm actually interested in seeing the resume, the bunch of the ten who have applied, can I stop? I'm interested in seeing the resumes, the ten who have applied.
I don't have to look at those. I don't have them, so. The sale has them, but.
Any reason I can't take a look?
Uh, it, it's, it's an only closed process until we get the final. Until, until it's a finalist, because there's a confidentiality, our own process. So. I'm happy to have that conversation with you offline.
Okay.
Okay, um, we did. Um, any further public comment from our small public? Okay, so there is no comment, so motion to adjourn. Right, Chelsea, go.